Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the November 12th meeting of the Millbury City Council. And maybe I can get President of the Rotary Club lead us in the pledge. Did you do this? Did I ask you to do this already, Sherri?
I can do it for you.
Okay, thank you.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sherri Teresi, President of the Rotary Club, for starting us off. Okay, and then I'll need a roll call. Sorry, I missed the roll call part.
All council members are present.
Okay. And I just want to, as a disclaimer, I just want to say that Councilwoman Schneider just got off the plane from Japan.
So I'll be very jet lagged.
Okay. Thank you for being, making the effort to be here. Okay, so we have some presentations, and it's a very auspicious night. Tonight, we're doing a proclamation to recognize Veterans Day. And Veterans Day is a, is a commemoration of World War I, which ended on November 11th, at 11, 11 past 11:00. So it's a very important event, and we just want to recognize a few people. Particularly, we have Mike Michelo, who's 93.
Hey, Mike.
And served in, oh, that's interesting. Mike served in three wars.
Mr. Mayor, we gotta get a picture down there.
We will. Why don't we, I'm gonna call every, all the veterans to come and take a picture of the council members. So Mike's been in three wars, World War II, the Korean War, and Vietnam. So that's a true American hero. We have Captain Robert Gottschalk, who is also a past mayor, past president of the Rotary. Can you stand up, Robert? Is Rob Decote here? President of Lions Club and former Navy. We have Tom. There he is. Always like to make a grand entrance. There you go, there you go. And we have Tom Williams, who is also in the Marines. And on camera, Dave Cooper, who's our, who runs our council meetings.
He did.
So Dave, maybe you can somehow put the camera set further front, and we can all take a picture together with all the veterans. Is anybody else that, who's a veteran? Trent, is Trent here?
Yep.
Trent. Trent Sinahara, would you honor us by having taken a picture with the council?
Everybody, come on up. Yeah, Trent, we'll have somebody else take a picture.
Maybe Elaine can take a picture.
We need your photo.
That'd be 25 cents.
That'd be 25 cents, put it on the tab, right up front. You mind, sir?
Anybody who's a veteran, come on up and take a picture.
Well, the two of them looking at the lions are actually, sorry.
Move a little bit this way.
Trent's coming in, too.
I gotta kind of see you. No rabbit ears.
I would not do that to you.
You might.
Rob, can you see?
He looks mischievous today.
Okay, can I pull it closer, please? One, two, three. Let me try my cellphone, too. Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pappin had a few interesting statistics to share with us.
Oh, yes. I was honored to share Veterans Day on the USS Hornet in Alameda. It's an air, sea museum, space museum as well, so I encourage everyone to be over there. California has over 1.6 million veterans, more than any other state. We are very honored to have them and for their service of many, many years, those who have given the ultimate sacrifice, their families as well. It was quite an honor to be there. And one of the most important statistics we should all remember is that less than 1% of the U.S. population serves in our military. Yet, we are probably the most powerful military might in the world. So we are so honored for everyone who has served. Thank you very much for being here, and we owe you the greatest debt of all. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have some people from the, young, young people from the mid, I'm gonna skip to the mid peninsula, the Boys and Girls Club, so allow them to get out here early and go do their homework. So, let me see here. We have a few Youth of the Year candidates, and we want to recognize them. Scarlett Armaburo, Vincent Martinez, Adiana Rodriguez. So I guess Scarlett's here? Is that correct? Okay, why don't you come on up? Okay. So, the Boys and Girls, or the Mid Peninsula Boys and Girls Club is a nonprofit organization that serves the youth between the age of five and 19 since 1955. I would argue that it also serves adults, too, because they get something out of it as well. And national, this national movement began in 1860. Over 4.5 million youth have been served, and there's 4,000 Boys and Girls Clubs across the country. Their mission is to provide members with a wide variety of educational, recreational, and social activities in a safe, structured environment. Then, the, the Boys and Girls Club is, is situated in the Old Scout House on Taylor School, Taylor Middle School School, and the city has been its proud sponsor in the last five years. And I just, we want to recognize all the efforts that you do and the outstanding work. And we have outstanding people like Scarlett here. Would you like to say a few, you don't have to, but would you like to say a few words? You want to? Sure.
I would just like to say that it was a very long and enriching experience, and I'm, and I'm really happy to continue the experience of being Youth of the Year. So thank you for this. Yeah.
Do you want somebody else to take a picture?
Do you want somebody else to take a picture? Yeah. Don't worry, don't worry.
Congratulations. Thank you guys so much. Good luck. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. So we have former Mayor Gottschalk, and are you gonna make, Sherri, are you gonna come up to you? And Sherri Teresi. And Sherri's the president, and Robert Gottschalk was a former president, former mayor, retired captain in Navy.
Mackenzie? Please. Well, good evening, Mayor, council members, ladies and gentlemen. Sherri Teresi, as was said, is the president of the Millbury Rotary Club, and I am here as co-chairman of the committee that organized the event. We're very pleased to be able to share the results of this recent event. City manager Tom Williams also played an important role in planning the event, although he has got many, many other things to attend to, certainly. Special attention certainly is due and deserved by Recreation Director Mackenzie Brady. Regret that most of our committee of 11 is unable to be here due to travel or other conflicts. Mayor, would you join us up here as well, please? The combined efforts of the city staff, Rotary Club members, and volunteers held the first annual Millbury Rotary Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament on October 24. The purpose was to raise funds to be shared equally between the city, to help rebuild the recreation center, and with Rotary youth programs. We now have a check in the amount of $12,550, which represents the one half. This is the one half that the city will be able to use to apply toward the cost of replacing the much-needed rec center. So we thank the sponsors, the golfers, city staff, Rotary members, and the numerous volunteers who made this all possible. Soon, we hope to begin planning the second annual Millbury Rotary Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament, which we hope to hold not in October like we did this year, but in September of 2020. So please be alert for the announcements, and hopefully you will join us. Everyone had a good time. Some of us played better golf than others. Fortunately, I was with a team that had some good golfers. So Mayor, city, all those involved, thank you so much.
Trent needs another picture.
Yeah, can you guys actually get all the kids together? One.
Adiana will take it now, she'll make the deposit.
Thank you.
Okay, so you can see that why Millbury is such a vibrant city is because of the different clubs, the Rotary Club, and the, and Lions Club, and other youth organizations and adult organizations that, that work hard to make whole our cities where our funding is needed and where there's a gap. So again, thank you Rotary Club for doing that. And also, I just, again, just want to reiterate that we're such a lucky city for all the, all the wonderful clubs that we have here. Okay, so the next event, thank you very much, Millbury Rotary Club. I'd like to also invite, the next proclamation is proclamation is Giving Tuesday. And this is an event that's been, that's been promoted by the Millbury Education Foundation. So Maura Lebron Shea, and President of the Foundation, as well as Vice President of Communication, Joy Henry, would you like to come up? Rather than me being a talk ahead, why don't I let you explain Giving Tuesday? And, and I just want to say that the council and the cities fully support your efforts and, and other community organization that's making our city whole by supporting education for our, making the funding gaps, creating, filling the funding gaps that we have in our schools. So, I'm not talking close enough, okay? And we just thank you for your tireless work. They're entirely volunteer. All the money that they raise goes all, to all the schools. There's no administration costs except for materials and supply. So I just want to thank you for your volunteering and all your efforts, and I'll let you explain Giving Tuesday.
Thank you, Mayor Lee, and council members. Thank you for your constant support. Those, for those of you that don't know, Mayor Lee was one of the founding members and the first president of the MEF. Giving Tuesday is an international movement, and it's on, this year it's on December 3. And basically, what it promotes is charitable giving throughout the world. What we're looking at doing here in the city of Millbury, throughout the peninsula, and throughout our community, is basically to focus on giving to the Millbury Education Foundation, specifically so that we can promote not only learning, but specifically towards funding, so that we can, by the year 2021, at least get one additional aid for each school site. So although the goal is to have one additional aid per school classroom, we're at least trying to aim for at least one aid per school site by 2021. I think I mentioned this the last time that we were here, is that the, the schools within Millbury have a student-teacher ratio of 27 to 1, which is extremely large and one of the highest in the nation. So we're trying to alleviate that pain for the teachers, and giving, our focus is, Giving Tuesday is to, to, to help that. So please spread the word, and we're on every social media platform. We're on Instagram, Facebook, so look throughout the next coming weeks up to December 3rd and support the Giving Tuesday movement. Thank you.
I would, thank you. So to reiterate what Joy mentioned, we truly appreciate having this coming, having December 3rd, 2019 declared as Giving Tuesday, with the idea that, that, you know, MEF is working to increase students' access to small group learning. But Giving Tuesday is a day that we hope everyone will consider giving to nonprofit organizations in our community, in our school community, in our civic community, or more broadly. It's truly a great opportunity for all of us to come together and to have a day that marks our opportunity to not just snap up those Black Friday deals or those Cyber Monday deals, but give something back to our friends, our community, and the world. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I just also want to mention that members of the city council has put up a $600 matching grant, so if you'd like to make your money stretch, you can take advantage of that. But that, that matching grant won't last long, so you need to send in your money as soon as possible. And you can also go to the website and donate there as well.
Thank you.
Hey, getting a lot of exercise. All right, so thank you again to Millbury Education Foundation. All right, we have a presentation by our police chief, Captain Paul Conkle, from the Sheriff's Department.
My name is Paul Conkle, I'm your police chief. Before I start, on behalf of the Police Bureau, I'd like to wish the Marines present and in our community a happy 244th birthday, happened on November 10th, Mr. City Manager. And on behalf of the numerous veterans of the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, I want to thank the veterans present, the veterans of the community, especially our combat veterans. Thank you so much for your great service to our fantastic nation. Okay, I'm gonna present the 2019 Annual Report on behalf of the Millbury Police Bureau. What we're gonna review, we're gonna talk about law enforcement services, gonna quickly review calls for service, crime trends, arrests, some other statistical data. We're talking about community policing, some developments in the Sheriff's Activity League, notable events for the year, upcoming activities, and the Bureau accomplishments. So this one's important to me as the chief. Calls for service this year, we had about 17,000, and I'm very proud that about a third of those are self-initiated. That means we're stopping people, we're talking to people, we're going out with folks in the community to try to, is everything okay? Is something odd afoot? Does someone need service? I like that my deputies are engaged with the community. When I was appointed this position, then Mayor Pappin and the city manager were very clear with me, they wanted stronger engagement, and I think we've delivered on that. Our response times for emergency calls, CFS means Call for Service, is 2 minutes and 39 seconds, which is fantastic. We're not a big city, but it's hard to get around in our city from time to time. So 2 minutes and 39 seconds for an emergency response is with lights and sirens, and in any circumstance, that's pretty quick for our average response time. Our average response time has dropped a little bit, and continues to drop. I don't know if that's because we're driving faster or better, I'm hoping it's because we're driving better and safer, but we are getting there as quickly as we can. For crime trends, in my world, we really pay attention to Part I crimes. A Part I crime is homicide, sexual assault, robbery, assault, burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and arson. We don't have a lot of serious Part I crimes in our city, thank goodness. But we have a pretty decent number. We had 786 last year, a large majority of those being theft and auto burglary. We made 121 part crime, Part I crime arrests. A number of misdemeanor arrests, 581, and that goes from everything from shoplifting to drug laws now, because I, again, the laws in our great state have changed, so things have gone from felonies to misdemeanors. So we've had an increased number of arrests for misdemeanors. We had 279 auto burglaries last year. That's still a decrease from prior years. I expect that to continue and maybe trend up a little bit. We are doing all we can, I'm gonna discuss some of our efforts in a minute. But again, with changes in the law and making it a misdemeanor, it makes it difficult to enforce auto burglary laws. We can arrest people, but they don't stay in jail long, and there's no real accountability measure to help with that, so it makes it difficult on our side of the house. But again, we enforce the law, not make it, so we do what we're supposed to do. And we had 13 DUI arrests, which I'm pretty happy with, that's about one a month, that's not too bad. And that means people are responsibly drinking and not driving in the city of Millbury. So again, the number of incidents reported, 786, the arrests, misdemeanor arrests, traffic enforcement and moving violations. This is another topic that comes up frequently, that people want more traffic enforcement, and they want more parking enforcement. I was very diligent with my staff that I want to start writing more tickets, not just the guys on the motorcycles, but the guys in the cars. And I'm happy to report that we wrote over 3,000 tickets last year. I know it's not happy when you get one, but again, the whole idea behind writing citations is to modify behavior, not to punish people. We want to teach you, hey, you need to slow down, you need to stop at the stop signs, you need to make turns when appropriate. We also issued 4,200 parking citations. I expect that to go up tremendously this year. The people who issue parking tickets for us are, are community service officers, and we had the good fortune to have two of them promoted last year, two of my three. And it takes a long time to replace those guys, because they have to go through a rigorous background, so I'm back up to three. So I'm hoping those numbers go up and we do a better job of enforcing our parking laws. Crime clearance rates overall were pretty good. I know percentage-wise, it doesn't look awesome, but compared to the rest of the county and the state, we're generally heading the shoulders above clearance rates. Are violent crime clearance rates a little bit down? That's because the reportable violent crimes have gone up a bit. And I don't think we've seen a spike in scary violent crime, but robbery's been one that's gone up. I know we have at least one lawyer in the room, and the technical definition of robbery is theft with force or fear. So we're getting people who would shoplift, and they're pushing the person out of the way, which turns it in from a petty theft into a robbery. So that's a little bit of the reason that that's gone up a bit, and the clearance rate isn't as high, because people do that, and then they run back to Barton, back to the city. Community events. Life in our country's become a little more interesting with large community events. We've had to spend a lot more time, effort, and planning, and money, and securing these events. We've had several good, large events this year. The biggest one, of course, being the Millbury Art and Wine Festival. We put a ton of effort into that, it was on the heels of the Gilroy Garlic Festival shooting a couple weeks before. We did some things we'd never done before. We had undercover officers walking around, we had air support high up watching, SWAT elements walking around for deterrence and for public engagement, so people could see they're not scary guys, they're nice guys. They did more picture-taking than any other deputy in the whole office those days. But I wanted high-end response folks to be there on the off chance that we needed. And interestingly enough, we've got great feedback on that. The best feedback was from the vendors, because I didn't realize, most of these vendors are on a circuit. And a large number of our vendors at Art and Wine had been at Gilroy, and they were very thankful for their really strong presence, and it's a balance, and we're trying hard to get that balance right, that we don't militarize it, it's not scary, but people feel safe and secure, but can still have a fun and family kind of environment. So hopefully that continues, and if you have feedback on it, I'd be more than happy to hear it. We had our first bike rodeo this year, which was a huge success. Our 4th of July celebration was nice, the Beasts and Brews that Mackenzie put on was a, were great events, but they were kind of scary ones for us, because again, it's in the thrust of all these other things that are happening nationally, it's uncontrolled ingress and egress, so we put a lot of thought and effort into this hearing, and I think we did a good job of securing them without overdoing it. And we secured some of our other big festivals, again, trying to do it as judiciously as possible, but as safely as possible. It was a big year for the Sheriff's Activity League. We finally got an MOU with the school district, so we've been helping them peripherally for a long time, and I know Councilmember Oliva has been very, she's reminded me a lot that we need to get this taken care of. She was a great force for this, a great advocate for Sal, and I was very happy that we were able to take that home to the school district. So now we can really, really contribute in a way that we hadn't before. We'd always participated a bit, but as you can see by our numbers, we're doing a lot more. One of my new CSOs comes from Sal, so I have him split his time. So he'll be giving traffic tickets in the morning, and he'll be doing lunches at Taylor Middle School, or running soccer programs after school. So it's a nice kind of bang for the buck on this, but Sal is, you're gonna see a lot more of them, you saw them at the bike rodeo, you're gonna see them this weekend at our Disaster Preparedness Day, but it's great to have them onboard. Community engagement, we're really working hard to get out of the community. We want to have a good reputation and relationship with the community, and we've done some neat stuff here that I don't know that we've done in a long time. The coffees with us have been fantastic, having the Bike Patrol guys out, reading to kids, junior golf program, participating in the festivals, the cocoa with deputies was a huge hit. I thought it was kind of interesting that we're gonna serve hot chocolate to kids before school, and we ran out, because it was such a hit with the kids. We're really trying to get into the high schools, interact with them. We're training at the high schools for things, but we're trying to develop relationships so if things happen, it doesn't go to horrible crime, it's something we can handle without, hopefully ruining a kid's future, we can deal with it on the lowest level possible, not just go straight enforcement all the time. And being president of the schools is an important piece of that. Our traffic enforcement, I have brought the saturation and traffic enforcement program into the city of Millbury. We're scheduled to get it three times a year, I think we've had it five so far, because every time another city bails out, I want it. So we've done a lot of work, especially on El Camino, Broadway, and on Magnolia, for pedestrian safety. helpful for us. It's good for us to hear what the community wants, or where they see their problems, because we can't be everywhere. When I took over last September, I saw that a lot of things, that we had quality personnel here, but not a lot had been done in the Bureau, in the time since we transitioned from Police Department to Sheriff's Office. So we spent some money last year, and brought us into current technical, the current technical state that the rest of the Sheriff's Office is in. So we now have two radar trailers, so we can shoot radar from the trailers, and we can put signboards out for them. We have a TrueNarc machine, we used to actually, when we tested drugs, put them in a glass vial with chemicals, smash the chemicals, shake it up and see if it turned colors. Well, this TrueNarc machine allows us to shoot a laser at it, that way we don't have to touch it, we're not exposed to whatever it is. It's a huge concern, especially with fentanyl, and besides drugs, it can test for explosives, it's an amazing machine, but that was a big win for us as well. We transitioned to a machine called TicketPro, so we don't write tickets anymore. We were still writing tickets in Millbury when I got here, and the rest of the Sheriff's Office is using electronic ones. That was unacceptable to me. So all of my deputies now have TicketPro, so we can bang out tickets faster, and they're generally legible now, and we lose a lot less of them in court because you can't make them out, or they're incorrect. We've increased our presence in the community. If you see me during the day, and you're in the police station, and you're not working on a report or doing something else, you're not going to stay in there for long. I want you out on the road, and patrolling, and making stops. We've gotten much better with that. I think we're building better relationships with the community. The school stuff is going well. We've given our Bureau a facelift, so it's not quite done to where I want it, I'm hoping the next couple months we do that. And with the facelift, things like painting and kind of redoing things, we've designated an area for a historical, a Millbury Police Historical Wall, so we can honor our history as a police department, even though we've transitioned into a Sheriff's Office doing the work. We promoted a bunch of people to specialties, we now have people work all over as detectives, as field training officers, the street crimes guys, who started off in Millbury. One of the things I tell people when they come here is, if you work hard for me, I will make it my life's work to get you to where you want to be. Well, that's, over the course of the last year, made this the place to be. So every heavy hitter, hard charger in the Sheriff's Office wants to work here, because they know if they come here and work hard, do a good job, they're going to go on to the next part of their career. I have a guy on the lieutenant's list, and a guy on the sergeant's list I hope to lose in the next couple months. I don't want to lose them, but it's good to get them on to bigger, better things, and the bench behind them is very deep. We've got some other things going on as far as engagement. One of the other things I'm really proud of is we started a 459 Task Force. 459 is California Penal Code Section for Burglary. As we're getting killed in auto burglaries, we recognize that this is a regional, a statewide issue, not just a Millbury one. And we had our first meeting with five cities and 36 people, and now we have over 180 cops and five counties working together on this. So when things happen, we can get it out real time, gather real information, it's really working out really well, and it's being replicated in other parts of the state. Very big on psychological stuff. As you recall, when I came here, I came out of Corrections, where I taught two national conferences on mental health and corrections. We had a tragic incident last year that kind of resulted from perhaps a mental health issue, so we've been working very hard on integrating our new PERT team, the Psychological Emergency Response Team, into Millbury, and they responded 90 times this year to Millbury to deal with people who have mental health issues, and they have specialized training, even beyond the CIT training, excuse me, which puts them in a better position to deal with someone who's in mental duress. That way, there's no mistaking things, it doesn't have to go to a crime thing, hopefully it doesn't go to use of force, hopefully we can deal with it on the lowest level possible with highly trained folks, and so far, we've had great success with it. My goal for the next year is I want to continue strong public engagement, I want my folks out there, I want to be out there more. I want to continue high-visibility enforcement and patrol. I like having our patrol cars out on the road, I don't like having them in the back lot. I have a bit of a pain like that. I want to complete the Automatic License Plate Reader Project, so we are just about there. We've identified the spots where we want the ALPR readers, we've worked, we've identified a vendor, and we are working with them to get the necessary permits from Caltrans, because most of the good places we're going to put them are on Caltrans rights away, so we have to kind of make, deal with them contractually to make sure it's okay, and do hold harmless things, and all the things you need to do to be able to put high-end equipment on those areas. We're going to increase parking enforcement, this is super important to me, and I want to keep going. The new person I hired today, or not hired last, not today, but last week, he's very clear, the job one is parking enforcement. He's a nice man, he doesn't want to promote, so we're not going to lose him, we may lose two others in the coming year, but we're going to start, I want to start building parking guys who are going to stay here, who don't use this as a stepping stone to go somewhere else. I like that it's an entry-level job, but I want stability for Millbury, and this is an endless problem for us, and people complain about it all the time, I would like to slay this dragon. And I also want to keep the Millbury Police Bureau the best place to work by rewarding excellent work and getting them on to the next thing. And lastly, I'd like to really thank the city council, you guys have been super supportive through a very interesting year. The city manager, the city staff have been fantastic. I like your honesty, I like that we argue, I like that you hear me out, and I like that at the end of the day, we all want to get to the same thing, to have a safe community. So that concludes my annual report. Do you have any questions?
Ms. Pappin.
Thank you, Chief. We appreciate your enthusiasm above all, so thank you very much. We have had reports about coverage throughout the city, so certain parts of the city, on the other side of El Camino there, really don't feel that there's a presence at all. And I think the city manager promised that you would be having an event on that side of the city of some sort, sooner rather than later would be greatly appreciated. We want the entire city to feel like they're covered and can count on you all as we...
And we have, after, I know after meeting on that, we have done a lot more directed enforcement in those neighborhoods, specifically east of 101, I'm sorry, east of El Camino, just to let them know, hey, we are here, we do care. We're a small but mighty bureau, so we're kind of spread thin, but we will work hard to make that happen, and equally kind of distribute our patrol areas and what we do, so everyone feels the same level of protection.
Yeah, that would be greatly appreciated, and there are some very active community activists over there, we'd like to put you in contact with, so that they put a face with the uniform and can feel a lot more comfortable.
I'll send it.
Thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Snyder.
Thanks, Chief. You talked about coffee with the chief, and I believe the city is planning on having more of those, do we have, that they might be at different times of days, or different days of the week, so different people could attend them?
Yes, the plan is to do, to stagger them at different locations, because I don't want to make it specific to one business, I want to hit all of our businesses that serve coffee, and I like the different times and different dates. I would like to, it's not just specific to the chief or the city manager, but it's nice when city council, the mayor shows up. It's very, it's a really good opportunity to get into the community and hear everything. We do intend to continue those, we're trying to define a date right now, November's very full, and December is as well, so I don't want to, I don't want to push it into the New Year, but we may have to push it out into January, but we will be continuing to do those, and again, we're going to stagger dates, times, and locations, just so everyone, if you're a Pete's person, not a Starbucks person, at some point, you get a bite of the apple.
Well, you gave me a perfect segue to Disaster Day, but just before that, I'm noticing, so just to remind everybody, when we had the bike rodeo, we gave out over 300 or about 300 helmets, and I am seeing more young people and more adults bicycling through town, a lot of them are driving down Palm Avenue without helmets. What can we do, or what are we doing to encourage especially young people, because they have to wear a helmet, don't they?
Yes.
Could you explain to the public the helmet rules?
So if you're under 18, you have to wear a helmet, if you're over 18, you should wear a helmet, and if you're not wearing a helmet, really, you should wear a helmet. And if you don't think you should wear a helmet, go talk to any emergency room, especially trauma person, and you're going to want to wear a helmet. We offer them for free, we get them through Sal, we also get them through the California Highway Patrol, so if you can't afford one, not only will we give it to you, we'll fit it for you, so it's on properly. So if you want a helmet and don't have one, if your kids want them and don't have them, and not just for bicycles, for skateboarding, for scooters, for whatever it is they're going to ride around at a high rate of speed, come down to the Police Bureau, and we'll make sure you get a helmet.
So just come right down here to Millbury, write...
581 Magnolia.
Okay, and the address is?
581 Magnolia, in the beautiful city of Millbury.
A little cloggy. And with that, we have the Disaster Preparedness Event this Saturday, can you elaborate, please?
We do. We're going to have the first-ever Disaster Preparedness Day for the city of Millbury. It's going to be this Saturday, it's a free event, it's from 11 to 3, and we're going to have all kinds of folks out there to teach you how to prepare for any kind of disaster. So there'll be classes on first aid, there'll be classes on how to prepare. We're going to have one about the zombie apocalypse, because if you're preparing for the zombie attack, you're still preparing for, you need food, you need water, you need medicine, all the same stuff you'd prepare for a disaster, just kind of a cool little spin. We're going to have a lot of our equipment out, because I want people to know what you get when you contract with the Sheriff's Office. The Fire Department's going to be there, we have a number of government agencies, we have a number of private sector folks, and non-governmental agencies that are coming. It's a free day, now the Lions are going to give out free food again, Sal's going to be there, so it's for everyone, if you want to come...
Bouncy House is going to be there with Sal.
Yes, Bouncy House, popcorn, and I believe we're even having cotton candy. So bring the kids, it's something for all ages. Again, it's a free day, if you want a class grade, if not, there's going to be a ton of information and a lot of people to talk to, and as the former director of the Office of Emergency Services, and things get interesting, and fires happen all around, and we have public safety power shutoffs, I want to be sure that we're doing as much as we can to communicate to the community, hey, you guys need to prepare too. I think this is a great first step for us, and it's an event I hope to hold annually every year in November.
And again, come and look at the Millbury Library, I think, I've just gotten in town, so I haven't checked the weather forecast, but I think we're going to be dry, so most of the event will be at the Millbury Library parking lot, but if you want to come and drive an electric vehicle, the test driving of the electric vehicle will be at the parking lot just behind City Hall here. So if you're 18, I believe you can come test drive an EV car.
Vice Mayor Holber.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, thank you, Chief. I was glad to hear about the license plate readers, I know we've been discussing that for a while, and it sounds like there's a process with Caltrans for the permit. Do you have any more information about when we can expect that to be resolved?
We were told at our last meeting, which I think was a month ago, it could be as long as eight months, and this is with someone who works with the state quite frequently, and has good relationships built already. The problem is, everything with the state government works slow. So getting permits, you had to get one for each location, and you have to have each location, and each location, I think we have a really good plan, we're where we want to set them up, for where we want to set them up. We're really unique, that we have, really unique that we have the support of the city council, city staff right away, and the city staff right away, we don't have to spend that for a year, we don't have to spend that for years, we talked about it. I've been very direct with that company, and I'll later done sooner than later, and I think so, and I think ultimately, the sooner it gets done, the sooner they get over. So there is some sense of urgency to get it done, especially because I don't like getting hit with auto burglaries endlessly, and we don't have a lot of high-end crime, but the crime we have, I want to crush, and the more and better use of technology we have, the easier that is for guys like me. So there is a strong sense of urgency, and it is going, but some of this is just beyond our control.
We're obviously not the first city that is installing these units, so it should be fairly straightforward, you'd think, with...
Yeah, and once we get the permits, it's going to be fine, but some of the areas, like El Camino, for example, and Skyline, don't belong to the city of Millbury, so I don't want to piecemeal it, I don't want to have cameras up in the, oh gee, well gosh, if they'd have only driven here and not there, I want to be able to put it all up at once, calibrate it all together, and roll forward like that.
Yeah, makes sense, thank you.
Chief, I love your passion, and I appreciate you tackling everything that we have thrown at you. There's one item that I'd like you to see if you can get some direction and some, maybe some creative ideas on how we can make our neighbors happier with all of the people that are coming from the airport and parking in the neighborhoods. So I don't know if that, if the new person that you just put on board might be able to help and maybe talk to those neighbors, so that they can maybe help with a direction on whose car belongs where, but something in that sort, with your expertise, I would really love to see something.
And so would I. We get calls, and the people who park in the neighborhoods and Uber or Lyft in, we have a relationship with Uber and Lyft through some of the problems we solved earlier in the year with the little parking lots, but it's difficult, and the mechanism, I think, that is effective as enforcement. So if we start towing cars, and word gets out that, hey, if you park your car in Millbury, it's going to get towed, it's a little more effective, but we need to know. So if people are having cars do this, and I don't have our parking hotline offhand, it's on the website, we'd love to hear about it, and if you call and no one comes, please call me, Paul Kunkel, 259-2300, ask for me.
Wow.
Because I'd like to hear from you. If we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing, and if we're not answering the parking enforcement hotline, and again, I'm confident we do, because I know the sergeants do it twice a day, and I know our CSOs do, but sometimes things slip through the cracks. If we get 10 complaints, and we only get to number seven, you know, eight, nine, and 10, think, well, nothing's happening. So even if something slips through the cracks, I want to be able to explain, this is why.
I think the neighbors would like to hear that you're going to tow the cars away that need to be towed.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So let me follow back on that issue, so they have 72 hours, so if we call before 72 hours with somebody, you know, mark the car or something, or they wait...
We come out and post it. So what typically happens is the car is out there for a week or something, and people get mad. They call us, we come out, yeah, it looks like it's been here for a week, we post a sticker on it, and then we come back 72 hours later. Actually, generally, we give them a little bit more time. We try to err on the side of being reasonable, so generally, rather than three days, we'll give you four, just so we're not towing it at 71 hours or 70 and a half hours, because that turns into a disaster for us, and we want to be reasonable in enforcement of law. But the sooner you call, the sooner we get to tag it, and the sooner we tag it, the sooner we can tow it.
Because my concern is people using our city as a three-day, you know, getaway...
Absolutely, yeah, we're a de facto parking lot for the airport, and I think that's, at least it's been made clear to me by the number of calls I've gotten on it.
Yeah. I was wondering if we could work with the city manager, and there's some off-the-shelf apps where people can register complaints or issues they see, if we can get something like that. I mean, not only will it address parking issues, but address potholes and road obstructions, anything like that, I would really encourage our city to get, today, nowadays, you shouldn't have to call somebody, you should be able to do it on an app pretty quickly.
Well, 72 hours out in front of your house is one thing if you own the car, but if I put my car in front of Councilmember Pappin's house for 72 hours, she's going to call me to move it. So I think that that might be...
I'm just going to get the keys, because I like it.
That might be something that we look at, you know, in front of your own house, 72 hours is reasonable, but...
That's why the first time, well, I mean, the first thing we do when we get there is we run the plate. So when the plate comes back clearing current out of, you know, Marin, you know, I don't think they're in Millbury, and they're probably here, they parked and went over. So there is a small investigation that goes into this to make sure, and frankly, our deputies don't want to tow cars that don't need to be towed, and they talk, they'll knock on doors and talk to people, hey, has this car been here a while, do you know whose it is? Because again, having your car towed is a pain, and it's expensive, and I don't want to put that on someone who doesn't need their car towed, you know, if they're in the hospital or if something interesting's happening, or if they have permission to have the car out there. But again, I'm not a fan of these guys who come in from all over the Bay Area, use our city as a parking lot, and then Uber or Lyft it in, but there is a process to that, so we're not, we have a high probability of doing the right thing and not just towing everything.
Actually, that just brought something to mind. We have had, I see it on Nextdoor, people who have been evacuated from their areas, and then they're coming down here to park, and then the neighbors are saying, hey, so-and-so is staying in front of my house until they can get back. What's a good way, if you've got family coming into town, or there's an evacuation notice, to make sure that that car doesn't get towed?
Call us. Call us and let us know. Call and put on the parking line, hey, this car is here, here's a license plate, it's a blue Mazda, and it's going to be here for the next week. And frankly, if you give us a heads up like that, we won't even come by and ticket it. Again, we want to be reasonable stewards of our community and not just go through and kind of...
Well, the other thing you could do too, is just if someone's...
Or write a note and put it on, I mean, that'll work too.
Or just have, ask for the keys to the car, and you can move it for them, you know,
through and kind of-
The other thing you could do, too, is just if someone's-
Write a note and put it on. I mean, that'll work, too.
Or just have, ask for the keys to the car, and you can move it for them. You know, that's the easiest thing to do. And you would want that anyway, in case something's going on in the street and you need to move the car, otherwise, you know, so.
We really try to err on the side of reasonable. But at some point, there's, it gets to a point where you're like, okay, now this thing's going to go. So.
How's the wind, Pappin?
Chief, in addition to that problem is that we have drivers coming in from out of town and sleeping in their cars. And I think we need to address that manner that they're parked, they're in their car, sleeping, waiting for the next ride from the airport. So I think we may have to address that, maybe a designated parking area or something. And if SFPUC is not using that property over there, you might want to put them over there. But we are seeing a lot of people sleeping in their cars, and those are those kind of drivers.
Okay, so we have a long agenda. I'm going to move on. But one last comment I would like to make is that the Chinese Business Association has grant money. So maybe, I know, there's two things, actually. One, you can register your cam, your webcam with the police department. Where, how do they do that?
Yes.
Just go onto the website.
Go to our website, yeah.
Just go to the city website, and you can register-
Click on Police Bureau, and it'll walk you through it.
Okay. And the second thing is that maybe the police bureau can get grants from the Chinese Business Association for cameras downtown, because we still have a rash of break-ins, and we'd like, and the best way to deter people is to know that they're under surveillance.
And we're working on that. I just went to the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, and there is technology out there. It's just a matter of kind of figuring out how to deploy technology in private lots. So we're at the beginning of that, but we're going in that direction.
Yeah, I mean, it's just kind of, you know, it's catch 22. We want to encourage people to come here and shop, but if they're not feeling safe, they're not going to, they're not going to come here. So we want to make sure they know that their sessions and themselves are being, are being cared for. Thank you, Chief.
Your work, sir.
And thank you for being very accessible to the community and being very helpful to the community. Really appreciate it.
Please continue to invite me to that stuff.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, Chief, real quick.
Yeah.
Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do and improvement, but I would like to personally thank the chief, and he needs to be commended on an outstanding job. He's been able to use limited resources, his utilization of staff, putting more and more of his deputies out in the field, which I think is indicative of the improved response time, because they are out in the field. And so when they're dispatched, they're in the neighborhoods, and they're immediately there. But it's been a pleasure working with you, Chief. Your leadership is outstanding. I've worked with several police chiefs in my career, and you're one of the best. So thank you for the partnership. Keep up the great work, and I look forward to many, many years ahead of us as we continue to make this city a great city and continue to improve. So thank you, and you need to be commended.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I have a proclamation for November 2019 National American Indian Heritage Month, and I'd like to invite Sandra Moore from the Daughters of the American Revolution. Sandra, you here? Great. Thank you, Sandra.
No, I've seen you too. It's good to see you again. Thank you.
So the city of Millbrae wants to, is committed to diversity and equality and inclusion, mutual respect as fundamental aspect of healthy, thriving community. The history and culture of our great nation has been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous people. The contribution of American Indians enhanced their freedom, prosperity, and greatness in America today. Their customs traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. So Native American awareness Week began in 1976. And in 1990, George Bush has declared November as National American Heritage Month. And we just want to, just want to acknowledge the, one of the original Americans, group of Americans. So thank you for doing, bringing this to our council attention.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
It's my privilege and honor to accept this, and I really want to do it in honor of our veterans. I don't think very many people realize that Native Americans have played a huge, huge role in almost every major battle, all the way back to the Revolutionary War. There are members of the DAR who are Native Americans, because they can trace their lineage back. We had Native Americans at Bunker Hill. We know the famous Navajo code talkers of World War II, but you may not know the World War I code talkers, the Choctaws, who also contributed to our victories in those two fields. So it's just a real great honor, and to all of our veterans, especially, because I am a daughter of a veteran and granddaughter of a veteran, and lots of veterans in my family. I just want to say thank you so much for your service, for the police chief who is here, too, because we have family members who've been very involved in law enforcement. Thank you also for your service. And the DAR is here to be a service organization. We're just very proud to serve this community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, so we have a presentation by our Recreation Director, Mackenzie Brady, regarding United Against Hate.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Millbrae community. I'll be very quick here. Just want to give you all an idea of what we will be doing for United Against Hate Week. We did not plan a number of specific activities, but what you can see on the very small calendar is a number of activities that Millbrae Recreation already has going on. So I'll read through a few of them for you. We have drop-in chess on Mondays from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., so you can come and get together with other community members and play a nice, friendly game. We are, we did plan a separate middle school game day on Tuesday, the 19th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Millbrae Community Center. So that is for all middle schoolers who can come over and play some games. We have video games that, those systems and games were donated by the Millbrae Lions Club, and we have a number of board games as well. Spanish Conversation Group, Tuesday from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. in the Millbrae Library. And then on Wednesday, we have the Self-Help for the Elderly Activity and Luncheon, and that is every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from 10:30 to 1:30. Starts with an activity, and then there is a lunch. On Thursday, we have Around the World Storytime in the Millbrae Library. We, the library puts it on, they tell stories in Chinese, Spanish, and in English. So speakers of all languages are welcome. There's Drop and Painting in the community center from 1:00 to 4:00. And then the City of Burlingame, and the Burlingame Public Library is holding a candlelight vigil and community potluck on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Bring a Dish to Share, and you can join in with the rest of the community members and listen to remarks and participate in the candlelight vigil. On Friday, we have Line Dancing in the community center, and then Ping Pong and Mahjong as well, from 1:30 to 5:00. And on Saturday, you can join in with your community members at the farmer's market in downtown Millbrae. Some other things that we are doing in the community centers, you can stop by all week and sign a pledge against, to be united against hate. You can add your name to that pledge. And then if you can't stop by the community center, you can join us on our Instagram, @Millbraerecreation, and engage with us all week long with positive messages.
Any questions? Okay, a few more things we wanted to highlight is that this, this event is started in Berkeley in response to a lot of the hate marches that happened a couple of years ago. And then I think it was, started us Love Not Hate movement, and it got picked up nationally. And most of the cities in San Mateo County has picked up this thing. And I just went to a presentation at the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors meeting, and they've adopted the United Against Hate campaign. So all the cities, and this was started by San Bruno, and it quickly spread. And the whole idea is that we have a lot more in common as people than we do apart. And hate is virulent, and it's also nonproductive. Obviously, we just want to promote that, respect all the different cultures in the, in our city, as well as other people. And we, there's other, I mean, there's so much that could be done to enrich our community than to have to waste time and have to see people injured and assaulted because of hate. And I think as, the most important part is that we be unified as a community, because right now, there's a campaign to divide us and separate us. And that's causing more national security issues than anything else, and that's what the generals have been telling. Every time I go to a veteran memorial event, generals and manvils all say that, that one of our biggest national security threat is the divisiveness, separation. I also want to point out that Burlingame, we have some great events. All the high schools are also, also involved. And if you want to, there's other cities have events, too. Burlingame on Thursday, the 21st, they're having candlelight and potluck vigil. So that should be fun, too. So you don't, you can go into any, many cities, and they have many events as well as Millbrae. But I'm hoping that this will be a, something we do every year, and it'll be at the November 17th and 23rd, that timeframe in the week of November. And it's easy for me to say, because I'm obviously not, I'm a minority. And, but I would have to say that, and don't really, when I was, when I was in middle school, there was only five Asians in the whole school. And one day, this kid that I hardly knew decided to beat me up. And he just railed on me for the next five, 10 minutes. So bad that people came up to me and said that was just wrong. And he just, he was just this angry kid. So my, my response was, you know, you can either be, I can either have hate, I have two responses. I can either hate, have hatred in my heart, or I can do something about hate. And I choose to not waste my time hating people. I choose my time to try to show what love is. And it's hard, it's easy for an Asian person, minority, to say that. And I'm hoping my colleague will stand up, because if you, if you're not a person who's not speaking up against hate, you're actually being complicit, and you're part of, you're also part of that. So I like to, I like to see more people speak up and support our community. So thank you, Mackenzie, for doing that. And I thank you, all my colleagues, for supporting this effort. Okay. Okay, thank you. And I thank my, my city staff to keep us on track. So we have one speaker. Is it Mandy?
Randy.
Randy, Randy, would you come up, please? Thank you, Randy. Randy from Supervisor Pine's office.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, honorable city council members and city staff members. Supervisor Pine just wanted to express his support for Millbrae's recognition of United Against Hate Week. As Mayor Lee mentioned, the Board of Supervisors this morning passed a proclamation cosponsored by Supervisor Pine, declaring November, the week of November 17th as United Against Hate Week. Unfortunately, even here in San Mateo County, we have seen acts of discrimination and racism, including hate graffiti at Burlingame High School just a few weeks ago. So as antisemitism, racism, racism, and hate speech are on the rise throughout the world, we in San Mateo County do not want to hesitate to declare our stance against bigotry and prejudice. I think staff are, the presentation already mentioned the event, the potluck in Burlingame. So I just want to again thank the city for making a statement against hate.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for taking the time to represent Supervisor Pine and Supervisor Canepa, and reiterating the fact that this is, this is not just Millbrae event, this is city, county, and county-wide event. Thank you. Okay, on to the agenda overview.
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Tom Williams, city manager. So the next items on the agenda are the calendar of events. You'll notice that we have two calendars in the agenda. One is our city business calendar that's actually on a calendar itself, and then there's a list of community events behind it. We're doing it this way because there just was not enough room on our calendar, so we separated it, and hopefully you'll find it informational. Then we also have reports of bills and claims, and a report out from the city attorney from closed session of October 26, 2019. Item number three is approval of the meeting minutes for the regular, regular meeting of October There are no oral reports this evening from city committee or commission chairs. Following that, we have public communication, and that's any member from the audience that would like to speak to the city council on any item not on the agenda. And there's a three-minute limit to those speakers. Moving on to the consent calendar, there are five items, or six items on the consent calendar. Item number five is to consider approval of a partial street closure of Magnolia Avenue between the Sheriff's Department driveway and library lane for the annual tree lighting ceremony event that will be held December 7th. Item number six is to consider a resolution declaring a trusted system for the management and record-keeping and the automation of our retention records program. Item number seven is to appoint a new committee member to our cultural arts advisory committee. Item number eight is to consider approval by motion of a parking lot closure and fee waiver for an upcoming city event for Lunar New Year on January 6, 26, 2020. Now, we are recommending that we remove that item from the agenda and continue it to the December 10, 2019 calendar. The reason for that is working with the applicant. There are some parade route changes and also some revisions to the fees. Item number nine is to consider a resolution accepting the Roxburgh Pump Station retaining wall project as complete, filing that notice of completion. Item number 10 is to consider a resolution awarding a professional services agreement for on-call engineering services and related to the Millbrae Water Pollution Control Plant, Tali and Row Incorporated, and Trussell Technologies. Moving on, we do have one public hearing item this evening. That's item number 11, and this is a public hearing to consider adoption of the city of Millbrae new fee schedule. These are a fee for services. There was an item that was publicly noticed for a development project that is not on the agenda this evening. That was postponed and actually continued and will be re-noticed at the time of the hearing. Item number 12, under existing business on the calendar, is to consider a resolution awarding professional services agreement to Swindleton Management and Consulting for a project and construction management services for the Millbrae Recreation Center project. Item number 13 is an informational report on the final draft of the city's classification compensation study. Item number 14, under existing business, is to consider approval of a resolution to form a friendship city with the city of Hangyang and the city of Dongguan, China. Item number 14 is to consider approval, no, I just said that. Moving on to new business, item number 15, receive a 2018-19 preliminary year-end budget update and adopt a resolution admitting the 2019-20 adopted budget, and also consider admitting the adopted five-year capital improvement program from 2019 through 2023. Item number 16 is to adopt a resolution admitting the employment agreement with the city manager. Item number 17, consider formation of a city council infrastructure subcommittee. This is to address infrastructure and other public works-related items. Part of this action would also be to disband the sewer modernization subcommittee and actually combine that effort into this new infrastructure subcommittee. Item number 18 is an informational item on the Broadway Tree Planting Project that's underway. Item number 19, 20, and 21 are to consider the annual work plans for the Park and Recreation Commission Youth Advisory Committee and the Cultural Arts Advisory Committee Work Plan. Following that, it's council comments. And then we do have a closed session item this evening, and that is conference with labor negotiators for the Teamsters Local 856 miscellaneous unit, Teamsters Local 856 sanitation division, and the unrepresented employee team.
So I also have a recommendation to move item 19 and 20 to head, headed the agenda to allow our young and public to, because we have a long agenda, so we'd like to get them up and running. Is that okay?
Can I, can I add to that?
Sure.
Can we take 19, 20, and 21 as one motion, once we get to that?
I'm okay with that. Okay. So, let's see. Do we have, also have a report out, pardon me? We have a report out from our city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On October 22nd, the council met and posed session to consider the evaluation of the city manager. There were no reportable actions taken at that session.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Councilman Schneider.
The Chair of Culture Arts Committee is here. Did we just-
We're moving it all up.
I thought I heard January. Okay, perfect.
Okay, don't worry, your jet lag.
On my ear.
Okay. All right, thank you to staff. On to approval. So council, with your indulgence, I'm going, since we have a very long agenda, I'm going to try to speed it, and I apologize if I cut you off at this, and I think you all agree that that would help, help everybody. Okay, so, and I apologize ahead of time. So approval of minutes, do I have a motion approved?
The approval of the minutes passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, we have no, no, we did that. We have no oral reports. And we have, we're down to the public comment. This is an opportunity for anybody to speak about items that are not- This is an opportunity for anybody to speak about items that are on the agenda. The council cannot make a decision or make detailed discussions about the, they still have to ask questions, I guess that's okay. But I have one, two speaker slips, and the first person is Peter.
Good evening, Mayor, council, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Peter LaRoe Munoz. I'm actually a council member myself from the City of Gilroy, so it's a pleasure to be here tonight.
Welcome, Your Honor.
And I perked up when the chief mentioned our city, and I hope that the lessons learned from that tragic incident were helpful in terms of providing increased security for other cities in our region. The reason I'm here, though, tonight-
Your Honor, can you speak closer to the mic for-
Of course, I'm sorry, I thought my voice was loud enough to carry through, not a problem. But the reason I'm here this evening is actually to speak on behalf of a regional event, is the Silicon Valley Turkey Trot, which will be happening on Thanksgiving morning in downtown San Jose. And the reason I'm speaking with all of you about it is, one, to encourage your participation as well as that of the public, but also to remind people that this is the largest timed turkey trot in the world. It raises nearly a million dollars a year for a variety of community service programs that serve those most in need, from as far south as Santa Cruz County, all the way north through Marin County. Things like Second Harbors Food Bank, Housing Trust, the Health Trust as well, just a variety of different programs for those most in need. So it's really something that is very important for our region. We also have a program going through the race called the Mayor's Cup Challenge, where cities are encouraged to send as many people as they can from their city staff and their city elected officials to participate in the race, and the cities with the highest participation will win in either the small cities, medium cities, or large city categories. So we certainly want to invite all of the cities within Silicon Valley, including Millbrae, to participate in that as well. So that is the reason why I'm here this evening. I have with me a variety of different informational flyers. I'll leave those with your city clerk. That way, you can all take a look at that. We would encourage your participation. If you're unavailable to participate the day of, that's okay. You can sign up and have a remote runner actually go for you, and we'll make sure that we get you your race bib and your race shirt and all of that as well. So you can certainly take part, even if you're not available to run on race day. Again, that's in downtown San Jose on Thanksgiving morning. The race begins at 8:00. You can join 20,000 other people racing throughout the region. So I want to thank you for having me here today. And also, Mayor, I wanted to point out, this is my first encounter with you, but I know you're, you're a great leader because you're wearing a tie representing the University of California Berkeley, the single greatest university in the world. So clearly, your judgment is impeccable. So thank you again for having me, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Honor, for gracing us with your message.
Bruins will allow it this year.
Okay.
Very good, thank you again.
I believe that was a throwdown to Mr. Aaron.
Bruins have really cute uniforms.
The run there.
It is a run. So what, where in downtown San Jose are people, and how do they register?
So you can register, there's information included on all of the flyers here, but it actually begins right near the Guadalupe River, Riverwalk Trail. So if you've ever been to the SAP Center down there, it's just right to the, right to the left of that, near the park.
Great, okay.
How far is it right in?
The race is actually, there are a couple of different options. There's a 5K and a 10K, and there's also a kids' fun run as well.
You can have a stand-in, so, no, not to worry.
Absolutely.
I was gonna watch you.
Yes, right.
Very good, thank you again.
Thank you, thank you for coming all the way over here. Okay.
Thank you again, city council, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Surely you all know me pretty well by now, I keep coming up here and talking about the issue of housing and how it affects all of our residents here in Millbrae and across the Bay Area. This year began with a lot of promise in the state legislature in terms of what might have been possible in terms of legislation that could help increase housing production and also protect tenants. And although unfortunately, it didn't seem like we got much decisive action on housing supply, we did get a really strong bill in terms of tenant protection in the form of the rent cap ordinance. Unfortunately, there are many news stories of certain landlords taking advantage of the gap between now and when the law goes into effect to engage in no-fault evictions or extreme rent increases. And all across the peninsula, cities are recognizing this as a major issue. San Mateo, San Carlos, Burlingame, all of these cities have considered ordinances to protect tenants, protect tenants, and likewise, the, the county as a whole is going to be considering an ordinance for that soon, soon as well, I believe as soon as next week. I know unfortunately, that you canceled the second city council meeting this month, and so it seems like the soonest that an urgency ordinance of this nature would go into effect would be December 10th. But honestly, any action is better than none, so I strongly urge you to consider this on the agenda for the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. You have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I know those other cities had reported some abuses in rent increases, and I'm wondering if we can put something on our website that, if we needed that. But we have had no complaints at this point in time from rental properties within the City of Millbrae. But if somebody has had a rent increase in order to catch the loophole, please let us know. But I know those other cities have had direct testimony, we just haven't heard of anything within the city.
I'm confused, because I thought I heard it was retro.
I think if I made it-
It is retroactive, there's a small gap within the 30 days.
It has to do with the evictions, not with the rent increases. And landlords had till the end of October to evict with no cause. So that's what it has to do with, and those are the emergency evictions that, ordinances that I'm not so sure we might run it by our attorney if they're legal or not, that the cities are, I think that Nathan is speaking about.
I'm just a little concerned that this is not on the agenda, and this is a very sensitive item out there, so-
I can't really discuss it. Thank you for the clarifications from our, our, some of our council members. Okay, no other speaker slips?
But Mayor, with that, I do understand the direction to put some information up on our website, that if anybody does have a problem, there are resources out there in the, in countywide and in the city of California.
Okay, so there is a speaker slip for number eight, and the recommendation to pull it off the, so we will allow the speaker to speak, and you still want to speak, Marion? About item eight?
Yeah, I can't speak.
You don't have to, if you want to. And, but it'll be off, it'll be off the, it'll be off the agenda, it'll be off the agenda, period.
Yeah, it's being pulled off.
Yeah, or whenever. Okay, so I have items five, six, seven-
She's still wanting to speak, right?
Yeah, she's gonna speak. So I'm looking for a motion to approve items five, six, seven, nine, and 10. Okay?
Have this vote first?
Yeah, is there a vote? Okay, thank you.
Items number five, six, seven, nine, and 10 passed unanimously.
Okay, before we move on to item eight, Marion, I'd like to do number nine. Oh, you up there? Oh, okay, all right. Quickly, no, three minutes, and then we're gonna move on to item 19, 20, and 21.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't expect to get pulled out of the agenda, but anyway, since I'm here, so I'm gonna say, so I, actually, I'm representing the Millbrae Cultural Committee, and I'm here to thank you, council, to support us last year for Lunar New Year, and I'm also is asking you to continue to support us for this year, for the, for the next year, to 2020 Lunar New Year Festival. It's gonna be on January 26th, and we will have the fabulous parade like last year, and then we will have a lot of vendors, and then some local, local organization performances. So it's, it is a fun event. I mean, who would put an event on the wintertime, except us? Okay? We are really brave, and we are doing it on the wintertime. So really asking all of your support, okay? So the next agenda, December 10th, please remember. And then I also here today on behalf of Margaret Fang, to, to, she asked me to speak on her behalf, so this is what she has. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, my name is Margaret Fang. I am a member of Economic Vitality Committee. I request your support of the 2020 Lunar New Year Parade and Festival. This event not only promotes cultural diversity and enriches our community, but also lift up Millbrae business with downtown merchant participations. The ultimate goal is to draw food traffic to Millbrae Downtown, and thus help improve our economic base with more sale transactions. I truly believe the Lunar New Year Festival would benefit our city and sincerely request your approval of 2020 Lunar New Year Parade and Festival. Again, thank you for your time, and then hopefully, I believe, hopefully acquire your approval and support for on December 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Marion. Okay, item number 19, the adoption of the fiscal year 2019, 2020 Park, Parks and Recreation Commission's work plan. You want to do, no, well, let's, let's vote all at once, right? Yeah. Oh, they're all under Park and Recs anyway, right? You wanna go youth advisory?
Hello. Hi. I'm gonna keep it short, 'cause, you know, long agenda, yada, yada, yada.
Yada, yada, yada.
I'm Nury, I'm Chair, I'm a senior at Mills High School, I'm the Chair of the Youth Advisory Committee, and I don't really know how to present this. Okay, there we go. That's, yeah, that's our members right there, I think. Yeah, that, that looks right. So yeah, no, our review from last year was that we participated in like the Coastal Cleanup, Arbor Day, and multiple other events. Also, like at the, the city-held movie nights, that happens every month, we were also part of that. We also held events for the youth, so we had a Games Night, and then other stuff like So our work plan for this year, I think it stays the same every year. So our task three and four is the one that we get to choose. And for task three, we were focusing on now partnering with the library because of their, they have a large, I don't know, influence with the, our target audience, which are mostly middle schoolers and elementary school kids. So they announce our events for us, and we help prepare it and organize it, and run it. And this year, we're planning on having a chess tournament in the spring sometime, and that'll be with the help of the library. And that it, that's it for the slides. Another couple things that we said, we're also gonna have a meeting with the Senior Advisory Committee, something we did last year, and the members felt that it was a good experience for them. And I'd also like to invite council members to come to any one of our meetings, and if we need it, if you, we're open to new events, and would, would like to hear from you guys, and any ideas for future projects. So, yeah. Is there any questions here?
Councilman Snyder.
I hadn't thought about this earlier, Chair Nury, but we have Pam Foss here, who is the Chair of the Cultural Arts Committee. The art show has a youth segment, so there were youth artists in there. Maybe the two groups can talk about getting art submissions for the art show in March.
Yeah, we can definitely, I think our meetings are every Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, and we'd love to like work together with the cultural arts.
Cultural Arts doesn't know about it, I just thought of it when you were speaking, so.
Yeah, no, we're definitely very open to any-
Let me also mention that Nury is, is an outstanding student at Mills. He's, I think, captain or all-star on the winning water polo team, and he's, he's got a high GPA, he also plays in the Mills Band, and he's the most busiest kid I've ever seen, so.
He's also a Millbrae Leo.
And Millbrae Leo, so.
That's his sister.
And we have, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm sorry I missed your last meeting on that one. We just had a briefing on the census, and we would love to get your help on being a part of that. Counting the city residents helps in so many different ways, school funding, roads, all kinds of things. So I will give you a call, and hopefully we can meet on this, because this is really exceptionally important, that we get every family and every person who resides in Millbrae, Millbrae to be a part of this, so we need your help on this stuff. Great, thanks.
Okay, and also would be helpful, in part, I mean, it's great that, any advisory, youth advisory committee, thank you for all the work you do. The primary mission, I would think, for any advisory committee is to advise, so if you could also advise us on youth trends, what types of things that we can do to enhance the youth community, as well as integrate, you know, many other communities, like the LMEs, like the aging population, aging population, culture, culture, different cultural stress of the youth, because it probably a better, probably a better melting pot in most cities, most communities. And, and what type of, what type of, how do you like to see, how would you like to see downtown, or would you like to see in terms of recreation?
Well, just one short thing, all the members were, when we were thinking of like projects to hold in the future, a lot of stuff with the, focused on the environment and our city, and that's why like our Coastal Cleanup and our Arbor Day are so popular with our group and with local teams, because it not only helps with our AP Bio and AP students that need hours for community service, but it also is something that a lot of kids are, in high school especially, are passionate about because of obviously climate change. So that was like one of the events that is, draws the most attention from high schoolers, so.
Fantastic. The other thing I might recommend is also get out to vote, even though you can, you can register to vote, as long as you're 18 by the time you're, you're eligible to vote, because I think that your future is in peril with climate change and on, and all the, and the big budget deficits that were occurring in the United States is a huge burden on, on the future generations. So, and I would love to see the youth speak out more about their future, because I don't think the adults are doing a good job at this moment. So I'd like to see more people vote, yes.
Could we maybe get some of those flyers from the census and the last meeting to get to the, you did? You did?
Thank you. Is there, yeah, please feel free to reach out to any one of us, particularly your, yeah. Well, we, okay, we love that.
It's at like 5:30.
Yeah, okay. Who else do you have? Mackenzie, who's going next?
I'm sure she's.
Okay. Yes, 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 yes. Julie Turner. Can you speak closer to the mic, Julie, please? Thank you.
Then I'll have to come up.
Yeah, there you go. People at home wanna hear, people at home wanna hear your voice, yeah.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, thank you for having me here, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve on this commission. It never ceases to be an exciting time, and just when I thought, oh, you know, it's been several years, then- Dan Quigg is the Vice Chair. Commissioner Chris Del Negro. We have a new Commissioner, Stephanie Douglas, who has joined us this fiscal year. We're very excited to have a new member of the Commission. And John Kiefer, Commissioner Kiefer is again, part of our Commission as well. So twenty, last fiscal year in review had quite a few accomplishments. And I want to echo your comment earlier about advisory because this is yet another very important advisory commission for the city of Millbury. And we had lots of opportunities to advise on a variety of things. And I think there's an upcoming presentation regarding fees and schedules, which we advised on as well just recently. But in terms of last fiscal year, our biking pedestrian committee, subcommittee, had regular monthly meetings to review the grant funds from San Mateo County, working on establishing those sharrows through the city of Millbury, which, you know, is noticeable by all, you know, all who travel through our city. And getting that safe corridor, also connecting the spur trail, another grant and funding opportunity that we took advantage of to get that completed. Looking at events in this community over the past fiscal year, we've had lots of new exciting things and some returning continuing to be, and I think our Youth Advisory Committee mentioned those earlier, but the one that's not probably mostly youth, but Beats and Brews, very successful event in our community, attended increasingly, I mean, I saw the crowds grow. I think we had four of them, right? Four, three? And just saw them continue to grow and grow and grow. And we had the stage, I think the new investment that the city made has been very well received. And I know that that's actually been an asset that some of our neighbors have asked to borrow. So I think the idea that, you know, we're getting phone calls from neighboring communities of things that we can do to assist them. But the Beats and Brews was very successful. We continue to support that event. That's something, you know, we would love to see year after year. Again, Millbury Movie Night, same thing. I think that also grew and enhanced the experience of people attending that in Central Park and other venues as well around the city. The food trucks, I think the other activities with games, the pictures, what did we call that with this photo booth kind of concept? I mean, lots of fun stuff there that I think helped enhance that, that, you know, more than just a movie kind of concept, but let's see. And of course, that Central Park being enhanced most notably by our community garden, which is something that our Commission had worked to support, you know, for several years and with the support of our new city manager, made it a reality. And we were all there working, I think I saw most everybody here, working to build those plots, to shovel the rocks, to put the dirt in there. And low and behold, that sold out, all 41 plots sold out in less than six months, just to show what the community was asking for and what they took advantage of. Our gazebo, of course, was then relocated from its spot close to the community center, but it was saved and relocated over here, close to our library, for all to enjoy. I travel past it frequently and see, you know, everybody sitting, relaxing, just enjoying, you know, the relocation there of that gazebo. I think we'll have to do something to celebrate, you know, the first big event there. I'm hearing rumors that there may be somebody, I don't know, who wants to get married in this community there. So I think we might have, yeah, we can try to put something together with that. And then, of course, our skate park user group was established. Our skate park has been probably through, you know, some cycles of, you know, being popular, being not so popular, being perhaps, you know, on some community members lists of, you know, could we reconsider replacing it with something else, kind of. But I think that, you know, the pulling together of this community who became champions of this skate park, along with the city staff, who really helped to clean up that space. They worked hard to improve the facilities, that small building that's there, and to help maintain that. So that has really come a long way over the past several years. I know that the skate park was put up before my kids were here and my husband and I actually sponsored one of the bricks. Neither of my kids has become a skate park user, but I fully support and actually really enjoy seeing some of the kids, you know, over there. And, you know, there's no shortage of athletes in this community. So I think it's just another opportunity to give those kids an athletic option, right? And then, of course, our recreation center. We have been continuing our process of reviewing and providing feedback on the conceptual designs that have come around and that ultimately make their way up to you. So the no shortage of activities and work that went into last fiscal year. And let's talk about the current fiscal year. So our work plan for 2019-20 is to continue in the primary spirit of what our Commission does, to advise the city council on many of the park and recreation initiatives, to also advise on transportation planning. We are looking at programs and fees, I think I just mentioned, and there's an upcoming presentation on that here as well for, as part of this work plan for the current fiscal year. We are looking at other funding opportunities, always looking for, you know, is there another grant that we could take advantage of, whether it be for something that we currently have that needs to be improved, whether it's something that our community would like to see for future. You know, I think maybe the, I'll be very interested to see what the Youth Advisory Committee might have some ideas about what would work for them and maybe we see whether or not there's some funding opportunities out there to help support them and have those two committees and commissions work together. Review of the capital improvement plans. So obviously, the biggest capital asset that the Parks and Recreation Commission would oversee would be our recreation center. In the process of that coming back, I think we are still committed to making sure that there are capital improvements because there are other projects that still need to be done. As we are working towards rebuilding that recreation center, we're also making sure that we're not just focusing on that one, but we're looking across all of the programs, all of the facilities, everything within our city. Of course, we're looking at supporting the staff and helping to enrich our community through these parks and recreation programs. So the last one is, of course, a kind of a new one, I think, but, you know, these are some things that have existed in our city for a very long time. The tree ordinance has existed in our community for as long as I can remember. And now we are at a point where it's important to revisit these things in light of really, you know, the trees that we have, the age of those trees, and whether or not we need to consider, you know, looking at maintaining those trees. Are they at a point where they're perhaps dangerous? We've seen our Parks and Recreation staff been doing that throughout the city. And we've seen some trees, you know, and I know that it's very difficult for our community to see some of these things change around us. But in the safety and the health and well-being of our community, these are difficult decisions that we do have to make and, you know, that we're doing what's best for our community. But I will also say that it's changed. We are not removing, I think it's best to look at it as restarting anew. And so we'll be working with city staff to review the tree ordinance and pass along our advice and feedback to you on the council. So I think that is all I have.
Questions? Comments? Councilwoman Pappin?
Do we have anything on the books, penalties for removing trees that are, like you're not allowed to? For instance, I'm very concerned about the BART development. I just picture one day, somebody coming through and just cutting down all those beautiful trees which could easily be relocated within the city of Millbury.
So that's a little bit different because that's, those tree removals were part of the project approval. We are working with the applicant, though, to look at if we can transplant and relocate the trees.
I think this council was very clear that those trees needed to be relocated and not removed, I mean, not destroyed.
Two different types of trees. Just to clarify, there are the little trees that are out in the parking lot and then there are the big trees running along Millbury Avenue. We specifically said that they were going to hang on to the big.
Big trees, two different types of trees. Sorry, I got flagged for not speaking. The trees in the parking lot that are smaller, destined to be relocated to a new location, so we have to find a new location. And then the big trees that run along Millbury Avenue overpass, those are to remain, that they weren't going to cut those down and replace them with something else. And those are the ones that kind of show up over it.
Just to stay on point here, so we would look forward to Park and Rec taking those trees, finding new homes for them. It's the only reason I brought it up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just a tiny, it has nothing to do with Park and Rec Commission, Julie. It's right now, what the city has, and this is more for people watching, we have a tree ordinance for city trees, not for any other tree in the city. So, or, and the ordinance review right now will look at care and maintenance of street trees that are owned by the city but maintained by the public, private trees. And in general, will be evolving towards an urban forestry management plan, which will include replanning programs for neighborhoods like Meadows that used to have a tree in front of every house. So it's not, when I hear tree ordinance, we just, we have a tiny little ordinance where other cities have much more complex tree ordinances, historic trees. This, the new ordinance will have heritage trees, they'll have species identified. It's going to be a little bit more complicated than just updating the old ordinance. I know that's not you, but we just had this presented to the Community Enhancement Committee. So it's a little bit bigger than simply an ordinance. It's a plan.
Okay, thank you. So the other things I noticed in the work plan is, can we have something about helping disadvantaged families and youth who wants to participate in? I mean, that's going to come in the fee schedule, I understand, as well, but maybe we should mention it in the work plan, something about helping scholarships. We used to have scholarship, I remember Mayor Cola Pecho was a big advocate. Yeah, so.
Your task three.
Yeah. And then also, I'd like to mention on these work plans, there is a mention of city priorities. I don't want anybody to get confused, that is, that's just, that's it there to, just to highlight the city priorities and that is not part of the work plan for people reading at home, okay?
Yep.
Any other questions, comments?
I just wanted to add one comment because I think that, you know, as Commissioner Schneider was, I'm sorry, council member, I'm on Commissioner, sorry. As you were speaking, you know, one thing that comes first and foremost to my mind now is the fires that we have had in Northern California. And I think I recently went into my backyard to do some clearing. What I cleared away made me realize I have a whole lot more clearing to do. But I think that, you know, perhaps, you know, as you were speaking, I will be looking at this tree ordinance as well, you know, not only from the perspective of, you know, the trees in our community and things like that, but also looking to see, you know, are we giving our community, you know, at least the courtesy of considering whether or not, you know, our tree ordinance, you know, will help with supporting, you know, perhaps a small element of fire suppression or something like that. If we have unhealthy trees, if we have dense forestry somewhere, right? I think we do need to consider whether or not there's a fire risk there. And I think, you know, this is something all that we should be taking into consideration because I know I live in the Millbury Avenue Canyon and, you know, some wind blows up that hill, you know, there's enough energy and fuel in that canyon that will take it out pretty quickly.
Mayor, I'm sorry, because it's a perfect segue. This Saturday, we will have classes on how to prepare your house. It's called defensible space. It's the terms that we're going to use. And sometimes the worst plants are actually the shrubs. So we'll, we all have a lot to learn from each other.
Yes, excellent. Thank you for bringing that up and thank you for this opportunity to present.
All right. Moving on to cultural arts.
A couple of years ago, I became a member. We had five members and now we have three, although I understand we have a new one that's going to be coming. But it's been a learning process for the three of us because we hadn't, we hadn't done any of these things before. So I'm pretty sure that the other two ladies feel the same way I do, we're kind of proud of the things that we have accomplished because we didn't know what we were doing before. Anyway, so we, we reinvented and we did an art show last spring and we plan to have another one this spring. It was a lot of work. I think, I think we thought we were over our heads for a while, but we're very pleased with how it came out. And I'm anxious to get in touch with that young man because we would, from Mills, because we would like to have more youth that age have art in the art show. And it's going to be in March, at the end of March next year. We also implemented painting, painting utility boxes. And we got a list of five boxes in the community and we offered the opportunity to Taylor and St. Dunstons and then the two high schools. And then the senior drop-in, senior citizens drop-in class, art class. So we've had, we've had two finished. I don't know if you've seen them. There's one out in front of, what?
Living spaces and trade.
Thank you, thank you. Living spaces in the median. And there's one by the post office and at the parking lot and Broadway. We're waiting for the deadline for a present, for submission of the new, of the, from the high schools to do the next two. So we're excited about getting those two things done. So we haven't accomplished a whole lot of things and we're doing some repeat things, but we're excited about what we are doing. And one of the other things that we want to look at is some mural painting on some of the empty walls in the alleys. And I noticed that there's some parking lots that have empty walls. So hopefully, when we get our fourth member, we'll have a little more energy to, to help us get along. So I really hope that we can. You have a gazebo?
Speak to the mic, Councilwoman Snyder, please.
Chair Foss, remember the Santa?
Yes.
Gazebo.
And the gazebo. I don't know what you want me to say about it.
Organize the event.
Yeah, oh, okay, we did do that. And we'll participate. And we'll participate in it again this year. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Vice Mayor Colber.
Yeah, thank you. And I know it's, it's a lot of work you guys have been doing, especially having a fairly small commission and people coming and going. Speaking of the gazebo, I think that is an excellent opportunity as a potential venue for either some type of performing arts, you know, performance or some type of an installation that could be installed there on a temporary basis. So yeah, I would encourage you to continue, you know, with your work plan and maybe look at that as a, as a potential space as well.
Right, thank you. We have talked about it.
Beautiful work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Chair Foss, didn't you and committee member Debbie Van Wart also meet with Sister Cities, talking about other potential art opportunities?
Right, Sister City is, is interested in sponsoring painting of a utility box to represent one of the sister cities. And, but we need to finish our project that we have started before we get any additional boxes that we can paint.
I think it's more that the commission, the Cultural Arts Committee is working with the other committees to find areas where they can partner.
Right, we are. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, would the council consider a point of order to take item 14 next?
Can you talk to the mic for the audience?
Would the council, there's such a lengthy agenda, as you pointed out earlier. Would the council be willing to take out of order item 14 next, by any chance?
I don't see any objections. That's fine. Yeah, we will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I like, I need a motion to approve number, work plans for the park recreation youth committee and the cultural arts advisory committee 19, 20, 21. Okay, I also like to thank my colleagues who represent the city at these meetings. And they're there, our council members, they're there to, not to advise and not to create the, the agenda for the commissions, committees, but to provide liaison activities. So I just thank you for your work and your extra time devotion to these committees and commissions.
Items number 19, 20, and 21 passed unanimously.
Thank you. And this, under, item number 14, we have the chair of the Sister City Committee, Chair, former Mayor Robert Gotchak, if you'd like to speak? You don't want to do anything? Okay, so who staff?
Good evening, Mayor and council member, council members. Before you is a report this evening to consider adoption of resolutions to form friendship city relationships with the cities of Hengyang, China and Dongguang, China. And also to authorize the mayor to act as the official representative to implement the development of the friendship city relationships with these two cities. As you know, the city of Millbrae has sister city relationships with La Serena Chile and Mostamalta. And we do have friendship city relationships with a number of cities in China, as well as Hanyu, Japan. There is no formal process through Sister Cities International for the formation of friendship cities. And the purpose really of pursuing the, and maintaining the relationships in the friendship cities is to further cultural, economic, and local government relations.
Angela, they need you to speak closer to the mic.
So sorry, I'll speak louder. Okay. So this evening, as you may recall, at your last meeting on October 22nd, this item was on the agenda for discussion. And it was pulled so that it could go to the Sister Cities Commission for discussion. So it was brought to the Sister Cities Commission on October 28th, where they met and discussed forming sister city relationships with these cities. At that meeting, the commission decided to continue their discussion to a future meeting, which I believe is for this month in November, November 23rd. And they took no action on recommending forming a friendship city relationship with either of the cities. So at this time, this really just concludes my report, the background of it. And we just have before you the consideration of forming the friendship city relationships with these two cities in China.
Thank you. Any questions? Vice Mayor Holber. You want to, you want to have a public comment first? Okay, so we have Commissioner Kathleen Camora.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm a longtime resident of Millbrae, 41 years. I'd just like to make a comment with regard to the request for multiple friendship sister cities between Millbrae and China. At our recent Millbrae Sister Cities Commission meetings, we heard a very good presentation from Dongguan Entrepreneur Association, wanting to establish a friendship city with Millbrae. Although Dongguang appears to be the city most favored at present, they do also have an active sister city relationship in the U.S. with Hartford, Connecticut. We also heard from another group from Hengyang requesting another friendship city relationship with China. And it seems to me that the city the size of Millbrae, it's not really sustainable to have multiple friendship city relationships with only one country. Other friendship city relationships between Millbrae and China were established previously, but are either dormant or inactive. And at our meeting, we did actually vote at the Sister City Commission meeting last October 28th to recommend limiting one friendship city with China. And I'm a really, I'm a proponent of friendship and sister cities. I serve on the NorCal Board of Sister Cities International, which recently had its annual conference in Menlo Park. Representatives from Bay Area sister cities in various countries were present, but none were present from any established sister city in China. It would seem to be me most appropriate for those in the community who really wish to establish a relationship with a city in China, which I'm very much in favor of. They should get together and decide which one city will work best for Millbrae, for student exchange, cultural exchange, and ultimately perhaps business exchange. And it should be sustainable and the goal should be long term. I mean, sister cities and sister city relationships are appropriate. They're a way to prevent hate. They're a way to promote understanding between different cultures. We're a very small city. And I, I think that if one city was chosen to be a ultimate sister city with, with a city in China, the city could focus much more on that one city and do many more things that would bring us closer together with that particular city, rather than having multiple, multiple cities that don't often have any activity. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Holber.
Yeah, so I attended, as the liaison of the commission, I attended the meeting in October. And I think there may be some miscommunication as to, as to the discussion and the action that was taken at that meeting. You know, there was a very lively discussion. And, and as I left the meeting, I agreed with this staff report that the commission continued the item, that was my understanding, to their next meeting. So with that, I'm a bit unsure why it's on the agenda tonight. I think it would be appropriate to send this back to the Sister Cities Commission and let them make a recommendation to come forward to the council. And, you know, I know there was a presentation from Dongguan, as was mentioned by Commissioner Camura. There seems to be a strong, you know, a strong connection with representatives in Millbrae and the Bay Area and Dongguan. Nobody on the commission had heard much of anything about Hengyang. And there was some confusion as to why that was recommended. So as I recall from the commission meeting, they would like more information about Hengyang, as well as Dongguan, and then be able to make a recommendation to come forward to the council.
I'd be glad to clarify some of that information. In terms of Dongguan, I know there's a very active participation. In fact, the vice chair of the Sister City Committee went to a Dongguan event about a month ago. And they currently usually have an annual event, and they've been to a city twice. So they're pretty active. And I don't know, we have had multiple cities from China. And that's reason is because the way that the Sister City Committee works is not particularly that the whole committee sponsors or supports, but it's advised. And we're required to have a sister city commission because, or charter with a sister city, international sister city committee. And so mostly, if, if somebody wants to have a sister city or friendship city, we require that somebody sponsor that because it can't be sponsored by the city and staff. So it has to be somebody in a, in the, a citizen in Millbrae. And that's, that's pretty much happened with Malta and happened with our sister city in Chile, although that's a little inactive right now because the person who's been sponsoring that for a long time has stepped away, I guess. But there are quite a few people here from Toisan. And they do, people do come. And maybe the Sister City Committee members have not been invited to some of those events. And maybe they should be invited to those events. But I know that, and Hanyang is, is interested. But I'm thinking more, if anything else, any city that has a citizen here who represents the city in anywhere around the world, and they want to sponsor it, and they, they feel they want to have a relationship with us, you know, I'm not going to discourage it. So that's, you know, but in terms of your comments, Vice Mayor, I'm okay with pushing it back because I'm getting conflicting messages. Somebody said that they voted and some people said that they didn't vote. So I'm really confused about what happened, Vice Mayor, I mean, Councilmember Papin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we talk in one sense about friendship cities and then sister cities. And I know sister cities relationships are really very sustainable for us here. It doesn't seem that the cities we deal with in China ever get that far, for whatever reason. I think there are various political decisions made on that end, which I've been curious about. But we, in the past, when we've had a friendship city there, it has been nothing more than a friendship city. And I think it's the government base in China that really has hindered that.
I don't want to make those assumptions.
Well, years back, it's, I mean, we did have one. And it, it just seems to be that is, that's as far as we get with these cities. I am with the mayor here, and these cities seem very impressive here. Most, 13 most innovative mainland cities. And so I do believe these relationships are important. And I thank the mayor for his recent trip there and developing these relationships. So I am interested in seeing these go forward here. But I think there's a definite distinction when we talk about friendship cities as opposed to sister cities. And I, I think the mayor has a point in if we want to sponsor those. But we should also be considerate, too, that Millbrae may want to be very selective in how they progress here. If the mayor's choice is one over the other, it's just, I think we should be kind of selective in how we move forward as to which cities we want to pursue this with. The larger number may kind of lessen our value. And I wouldn't want to see that.
Let's, can I?
No, Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Well, that, that does tie into the discussion at the commission meeting. There was discussion from at least, you know, a couple of commissioners that what we would like to see is a friendship city that eventually could develop potentially into a sister city and not just be a friendship city on paper. You know, and I think part of the, you know, one of the things that was, gives some potential in Dongguan is that they did have a sister city in the United States. So it shows that there could be a path to that. And with, well, I'm shaking your head.
Well, you can only have one sister city in the United States. With one city. What? Okay, will we clarify? Not a crime, yeah. I understood that you can only have one sister city with one sister city in this, in one country.
Country with one country.
Could we go back to the question whether or not we should be discussing this or not? If the committee was?
Well, that's the other question, too. So I was clarifications and asking questions, so.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I could clarify from, from our staff liaison and point of view, for the record, for the city record, there was a lot of discussion. But there was no formal motion, a second, or a vote, other than to continue the item for further discussion and research by city staff to bring it back at their next meeting.
Okay, so I, in interest of time, if it's okay with Councilwoman Schneider. Okay, you want to make a comment then?
Having, this is not one of my committees. And, but I did attend the Northern California Sister City Convention. So it was an opportunity to learn a little bit more about these and how other cities in our area handle them. So, you know, usually there is, there's a, there's a relationship with each community, but there's a budget with each community. And our Sister City Commission has fundraised in the past. And then they had an account with the city, but then they had to move it. And, you know, just having, the three of us just got back from Japan a few hours ago, there are budgetary issues to be considered here, too, whenever we do this, even to the smallest degree. So I like the idea of going back, having the Sister City Commission think about it. But I, I also kind of agree that it should be a step towards sister city. And what I heard at this, when you've got a country as big as the United States, you may have more than one sister city between different countries because we are so geographically large. I don't know how China fits into that. They're big, too.
Let me clarify, I'm just, I question you. You said you can have many, many cities, but.
You can have two countries that have several sister city relationships.
So like, for instance, us and Italy, us, okay, let's, let's say a larger country like Australia or something.
Well, Australia is big geographically, small population wise.
Okay, but they have many cities.
There's a bunch of criteria.
So they can, so the United States can have two sister cities in the same city. Because I understand like if Melbourne can only have one sister city in America, so Melbourne cannot have two sister city relationships. Is that correct?
I think that's something to ask them and have them.
I don't know what shaking your head means, yes or no.
Ms. Mayor, we'd have to research that because I don't.
Okay, let's research and get that clarified. I think there is a consensus to send it back to the committee, so let's do that. There's no, there's no vote needed for that. Okay, let's move on because we got, we got other things going on. Onto item number, so I need, there's a public hearing on the, to receive input regarding the adoption of the city of Millbrae service and fee schedule. To conclusion that the public hearing consider adapting a resolution approving the proposed city of Millbrae service and fees for city clerk finance, public works, engineering utilities, recreation, including parks. And so I, I formally open the public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor and council member. Danny Hillbrand's Finance Director will be opening up with Courtney Ramos from Matrix Consulting. About this time last year, your council approved a contract with them to complete a cost allocation plan, which evaluates overhead administrative support routed to non-general fund departments, followed by, which feeds into this master fee study. And they're also in the midst of a revenue enhancement study. This is a very key part of this project. This public hearing to consider updating many of the fees in our current fee schedule. The last update of our fee schedule was around fiscal year 2013, 14. We have not been able to identify when the fees were last evaluated comprehensively as they have been. So I really want to recognize the work of all the departments and their staff who've helped. They all sat down and talked with Matrix and figured out what services they're providing, maybe services they're no longer providing. And it was, it was a lot of work on, on the part of staff and our consultant. Also wanted to update you, we will be coming back in January for building and planning fees. We're just need a little bit more work on those. And so we'll bring those back separately. And we will be noticing them separately, so we no longer include in the resolution. So we no longer include in the resolution to continue the hearing. We'll update the fees included in tonight's discussion as approved, and then come back with a separate hearing. So again, as a, as a presentation is laid out, Courtney will present on the framework, the legal and policy issues. We have gotten significant support from city attorney as well. And then we'll get into the specifics as staff, both sharing with you the costs that have been calculated for fees, as well as some staff recommendations as to what to charge. So with that, I'll bring up Courtney.
See if I can figure this out, make sure I'm close enough to the mic. Well, I'm here tonight to give you an overview, Cliff Notes version of user fees cost of service study. And so what I wanted to do tonight was give a really brief introduction, reintroduce myself and my firm, talk about the scope of services, review the legal framework associated with user fees, talk about the basic costing methodology, all the steps that we went through with staff, and then a brief summary of the finding results before I hand it back over to Deanna for staff to talk about their proposals. A little bit about Matrix Consulting Group. We're in our 17th year of providing services to local governments. The particular area, the expert dealer I have within the firm, I have a cost of service related to cost of service, but we also have other members who have other process analysis, management analysis, audit management, staffing audit, safety as well as public safety. And this really helps us when we are working with departments and understanding of processes that they go through reviewing, reviewing permits, providing, going out and providing no for inspections and so forth. The main project team, I was the project manager for this, and I still am the project manager for this. And then I also had support from Kisho Lusain and Jessica Mazenko as analysts, and helped with the interviews and processing all the data components that were provided by staff. We're also located just down the road in San Mateo. We actually, during the process of this, we moved a little bit closer to you guys so that we could, you know, give you more attention. But as I get into this, the, a fee study overview, for those who have not been through the process of a fee study, essentially what it is, is it's a tool for understanding the service levels, service level assumptions, and the costs, both indirect and direct, that are associated with a particular service. So overall, what this study does is it documents those fee-related services. So when we're talking about numbers here, and we're talking about over recovery or under recovery or anything like that, all we're talking about specifically is the fee-related services. So while we might talk about parks and recreation, and we talk about a subsidy there, we're not looking at all of parks and recreation, we're only looking at the part of it that is fee, fee-based. And when we come back again and we talk about building and planning, the same thing will apply, that we're really only talking about those fee-related services. The reasons that you want to do a fee study are, first and foremost, is because we have so many amendments to our constitution, and we have so many laws here in California that say that you can't charge more for a service than it costs you to provide that service. So the key benefit of conducting a study like this is to make sure that you are in compliance. And beyond making sure that we're okay with things like Prop 26 and 218, it's also making sure that there are other state-set fees that they have out there in relation to copies and public records requests, transportation fees. There are certain things that they have set at certain levels, so making sure that we are still in compliance with that, and that we haven't increased fees beyond what is acceptable. Like I said, it identifies the direct and indirect costs associated with providing that service. It also is a great opportunity to streamline the fee schedule, to make sure that our fee schedules are representative of the services that we're providing, including adding new fees if we need to add new fees, or get rid of old or outdated fees. So a little bit, like I said, about the legal framework, there's a lot of different things within California that govern what we can and can't do with our fees. They've been laid out here, Prop 13, 4, 218, and 26, a couple of government codes, and an Attorney General's opinion. And like I said, what, essentially what those say is that you can't charge more for a service than it costs you to provide that service, otherwise it's considered a tax. However, there is an exception to this, and it pertains to recreation programs. And those can be market-based or market-driven. And the reason for that is because those are considered voluntary charges. They're not imposed upon a resident. You can always choose to go somewhere else to take, to play soccer, or to rent a facility. And not to mention the fact that you are competing with other things such as 24-hour fitness, or the YMCA, or other, other, other facilities, you know, Best Western or something that might rent a facility that you might want to use for a party or a meeting. So a bit of an overview of the general methodology. So what we used is what's considered a bottom-up approach, where what we do is we look at the time spent per unit in order to calculate the cost of service. This is the most widely accepted and most defensible approach for this. So, and the best way to kind of, to say this, is that we look at costing it out and building it up, so saying, you know, just one review of a permit or one inspection for that, for that particular permit, as opposed to saying, this is the cost associated with the department, and we're going to spread that over all the different services that we provide, so that we are, you know, then recovering for the entire department. Because like I said before, all we're looking at is what does it cost to provide those particular services? So it's not recovery for the entire department, it's just for fee-related services. We looked at updating the fee schedules and the structures. We calculated fully burdened hourly rates for each position. We established time estimates by position. We collected volume statistics. That helps us make sure that we're not allocating more time than we actually have. And we also looked at the gaps between cost and revenue. So just a little bit about updating the fee schedule. So when we worked with staff, what we wanted to do was make sure that, that fee schedule, that fee structure was reflective of the services that were being provided. This not only benefits the city, as they have to administer that, but also the public. When they come in and they're looking for particular services, it makes it easier for them to understand what is available and what's the cost associated with that service. So for, in some cases, we expanded categories, in others, we reduced categories. You know, we got rid of old things like tapes, because we don't do those anymore, changed the language to better reflect what we're utilizing now, something like a DVD or an audio device. When we established time estimates, what we did is we looked at breaking it down at, at a process level, at the basic process level, and saying, how much time does it take you to do that step in the process? And who's associated, whose time is associated with that? When we looked at that, what we wanted to do was make sure that we weren't thinking about the most simplest project that we have, but also not the most complex project. But what is reflective of what we see on average? So when we're looking at how many plan reviews, should it be three plan reviews or four plan reviews? We're looking at inspections, does there need to be three inspections, four inspections, five inspections, that kind of stuff? And looking at it from the perspective of each particular permit. So we didn't just broadly brush everything and say, everything is this many reviews, or everything is this many inspections. But to look at, on average, for each particular item, how much time does it take? So when we talk about total cost for service, when we talk about direct costs, the direct costs are the salaries and benefits associated with a particular position or employee who's providing that service. When we talk about indirect costs, there's kind of two components to that. And one is departmental overhead. So those are things like pens and pencils and other general operating services and supplies, but also citywide overhead, which comes from the cost allocation plan. So what is, what is the cost associated with finance or HR to support a particular department, and including that cost in there? So again, what we're doing is we're just showing in total, what is that, the absolute highest cost associated with providing that service? For purposes of this study, we use FY19 adopted budget, and the cost allocation plan is the one that was just completed. So for the results, when we look at FY20 fee-related costs, with the fee-related revenue for finance, parks, public works, and recreation, there's a current subsidy of approximately $2.6 million. So when we look at finance, finance has about 64% cost recovery, which is, is pretty good in comparison to what we see kind of, not just locally, but also nationally, what you see the typical cost recovery range for finance to be, usually between like 20% to 50%. Something like parks and recreation, we usually typically see anywhere between 20% and 50%. And that often varies, depending on the types of services that are being offered from a recreation department. And then public works is actually a little low, at 27%. We usually see that quite a bit higher, usually around 80% to 100%. So some things to think about as staff comes forward, some things that, that we would recommend, once you have this information, because what, what our report is meant to do is just kind of document what is the cost associated with the service. And then what you guys are tasked with is determining and approving what fees should be charged for those services. And, and each department should be treated differently. They have a different impact on the community, and not just each department, but sometimes certain fees within those departments. So the city should look at developing and/or adopting cost recovery goals on a department basis. So looking at each department and saying, generally speaking, we should be recovering X. That, then it's a goal. It's not, it's not a hard line. It's that generally speaking, you want to try and achieve that level of cost recovery. Some fees will be, will recover higher than that, some will be a lot less than that. But generally speaking, to just have a goal in mind for each one of those departments. And obviously, something like parks and recreation has a much more benefit to the community, probably is going to have a lower cost recovery level than something like public works or building and planning when that comes back later. So you want to make sure also to document if we're making exceptions to that. If for some reason we're setting something extremely low, we want to make sure that we document that, and mostly just because if we're trying to encourage a certain behavior within the community by setting that fee low, what we want to make sure is that we've documented it, so that in case that, then, in case that behavior changes, and we no longer need to subsidize that, that we're able to come back and understand why we subsidized that fee, and what the reason for that was, rather than not having that knowledge base to go back to, and then it just continually gets carried forward. So really to kind of take a look at what are the goals that the city has for each one of those departments and divisions. And I think with that, I will hand it back over to Deanna, unless you guys have any questions before I send it back to her.
Very detailed, and thank you very, very much. I just wondered, since we have that tiny bit of flexibility when you're talking about park and rec here, is it legal for us to have some sort of a tiny subsidy for like infrastructure, set-asides, something? How do we do wear and tear on, is, is any part of that included in rental?
So there is, as part of the overhead, there is kind of depreciation, if you will?
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yes, so that is calculated in there.
Oh, that's great. Okay, that, thank you, that, that was my primary concern. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor.
What is the recommended frequency that the fees be re-studied? Every five years, 10 years?
So we would usually recommend anywhere between three to five years to do a comprehensive study like this. This doesn't mean that you can't do internal evaluations and increase fees, you know, even on an annual basis, like adopting an annual CPI or something exactly. But usually, within three to five years, you have some sort of shift, either organizationally or sometimes even just technologically. One of the, one of the things that I can think of is that, as it pertains to building, which we're not quite there yet, but, you know, there's starting to be grumblings of, of doing kind of like Skype inspections, if you will. So those types of technological advances, as they start to come about, those are definitely things that would trigger the need to reevaluate that, because, especially when you're talking about inspections, travel time is involved in there, and that's a cost factor. And so if you no longer have to travel to a site, then you should be reevaluating your fees.
Thank you. Councilwoman Snyder.
Forgive me that I didn't get a chance to read this in detail, and it deserves.
You didn't want to read it on your plane ride back.
I tried, believe it or not. It did, it did allow me to get a little bit of sleep. Just a question, when we're comparing cities to cities, so I, right now, I'm on page 19 of the report, and it says Millbrae's cost for documents, as an example, are higher than some of the cities. Well, the cities that we're looking at, to me, are demographically different. I used to work in the solid waste field, we compared prices, but we always looked at cities that had a similar, or we compared similar business to residential component, because those had certain sets of fees that were inherent in that. But when we compare ourselves to Brisbane, they're almost the opposite of us. They're 80% commercial, 20% residential, Millbrae's 80/20, more or less, on that. And I don't really know what Burlingame or San Mateo are. When you do these studies, does it make a difference of your residential population versus your commercial population?
That's not generally a big factor, and you know, what, it's really hard with a comparison, because what we're, the only thing that we're really able to show you is this is what's on their published fee schedule. So if you walk in and ask for a similar permit, this is what they're going to charge you. What we can't tell you is what are their cost recovery goals, when, you know, you know, how much they've chosen to subsidize or not subsidize something. When we're looking at this, I mean, generally speaking, what we wanted to do was make sure that we had jurisdictions that were relatively close by. So I wouldn't want to, you know, compare you to, to something in Southern California or something more inland, because as it, as a tool for you to just see where, where you are benchmarked in the area, that's a little less useful. Obviously, I wouldn't want to compare you to like a Woodside or a town of Los Altos Hills, because they have no commercial. And so that wouldn't, you know, the only way to compare you then would be on something that was residential-related.
So, and I'm trying to find some examples in here. When we're looking at 80% to 100% for public works, my gut is, oh, that's a little scary, because does that mean water rates? And does that mean fixing sidewalks and all of those? Or maybe I'm just looking at, that's what scares me, because our trees, that are city trees, damage the sidewalks, which we turn around and have the residents pay for. So, and we're, and we're already charging our residents so much on water that they are so angry. And maybe that's not this part of the study, maybe that's somewhere else.
Water rates, sewer rates, those are all outside of this study.
Okay, perfect.
So Mayor, before we get any further, I'd just like to, I'd just like to bring the council's attention, that in your purple folder, there are revised fees in the table that we'll get to a little bit later. And the only change is, some of the items that are zeroed out, those are actually cents, and so the decimals weren't carried out. And then so like on attachment to, we have a 25-cent fee for photocopies, which is established by law, we'll get into, and a 10-cent, and a 10-cent charge for, per page for campaign reports, it's also established by state law. So that, that's the only change, but I wanted to, wanted to bring your attention near purple four folder to use these revised spreadsheets.
Are you going to tell us what a life certificate is? Are we?
I sure will, we'll be going through those right now.
Yeah. Is there a processing fee, though? I mean, this is just for supplies, right? 10 cents, 25 cents, photocopies for?
There are, that's folded into some of the permit fees. So these are just for copies and other things, but, but for permit fees themselves, there are different charges.
In terms of fees for building permits, I've gone through this, and sometimes I've felt like I went through five or six iterations, and this is a while ago, I say that, but I don't know, I've been getting complaints that some people have been going through many iterations, and if we could reduce, that would save us money if we can reduce the amount of back and forth between the applicant and the reviewer, to no more than three, because I know we use consulting services for a lot of our review, and I feel that we could save a lot of money if we had some sort of, some sort of guideline that would help both sides come to a quicker resolution in their design review or design modifications, than like, for instance, if they, they have to meet all these bum-bum-bum-bum-boom, and then, and then one more review, and that's it, rather than coming back, going back and forth. So.
Yeah, so not necessarily the free, but the frequency of which, instead of, you know, two, three rounds, we're getting complaints that there's seven, eight, nine rounds.
Right, I think that's, and then that's, you know, then the homeowner's going to have to pay those fees, too. So I would like to see us be a little bit more friendly in that respect. And I just want people at home to realize that a lot of these fees are cost recovery fees, don't cover a lot. I just want to reiterate, cost recovery is not 100%. And there's some of the, most of them are pretty low, majority, 90% of our fees are pretty low. And that means that you, the tax, the homeowners are paying for those differences in terms of not having to use that money for other things like road repair, safety, and that sort of. So the more cost recovery we can do, but then on the other hand, most cities can subsidize these cost recoveries by their taxes and their tax base. So that's a challenge this council has been working on, so we can keep our fees low, and also get, do all the other work we need to do to make our, make our city a vibrant city. So I just want everybody to be on the same, see this big picture, and the need for not only some cost recovery, but also morally to get our tax base up, because most cities have a good tax base, and Millbrae's very challenging. have a good tax base, and Millbrae's very challenged and I respect.
Yeah, and I'll just add too, from a staff perspective, is that, as you could see on the analysis and the findings, that we are subsidizing about $2.5 million worth of just these programs that don't include building and planning at this point in time that we'll bring back in January.
Counselwoman Snyder.
There is a heavy subsidy.
I'm looking at the section on business licenses, and this is a dumb question. If someone owns a home here and is renting out the entire home, so we're not talking about short-term rental, should they have a business license?
Yes, that is required.
Okay, because other cities started doing this a few years ago, and then if they had a home office, do they have to get a business license for their home office if they also have an office at their workplace?
Yes, yes. And there's a home occupancy.
Because Mountain View tried to do that a few years ago, and it became quite a thing in the news. It was, I can't remember all the specifics, but people had two workplaces, but because they worked at home for a little bit, suddenly they had to pay a business license. So as long as we're clear on that, they've got an office, say, in San Jose, but they only go down there three days a week, so.
I think there's a subtle difference there. One is if you, you know, if you're an architect, for example, and you have an office, but you work at home, we don't require a home occupancy permit. But if you're an architect and your sole proprietorship is your home office, that requires a home-based business permit as well as a business permit.
Just so we don't get trapped in whatever happened to Mountain View.
Our business license. Yeah, it's different.
I'm not sure it's clear that those of us who own a home and rent out a home should have a business license.
I think you are required to have a business license if you rent out a home.
Yeah, there is a specific business license tax for that type of use. When people ask us, we do have that information. We can certainly provide additional information.
Maybe that's why when I looked five years ago at how many home business licenses, we had 900 of them or 1,000 of them, I didn't look at what their businesses were. Just was amazed with the number of home businesses.
Yeah, just for clarity, I think it's a business license fee, not a business license tax.
It's a tax. Business license is a tax. The one that is here is the application fee. Yes, before 218, that's why it's allowed. And that's why we can't change it.
Thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you for all your work on this. Is there, so our consultant mentioned that you can do a CPI adjustment for this. Is that indexed in so that, you know, a year from now it will automatically be increased?
I think our intention is to do that through kind of our budget process.
Okay.
Is to identify, so we'll complete this study, we'll deal with the building and planning fees, and then bring forward a, and perhaps during the budget process, we can make those adjustments. Or if during the first year, we wanted to leave them for one year and bring them back, we would address that through that process.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think if we enact these whenever, like, so it needs a second reading, right? So, you know, assuming it goes into effect January 1 or whenever, then perhaps, yeah, during the budget process, it can be revised so that, starting July 1, you know, new fees will be enacted and updated.
Yeah, this actually won't need a second reading.
Oh, okay.
So the fees listed here can be adopted, they could be adopted after this evening's hearing. We've suggested January 1, give our public and our staff time to make adjustments, except for Public Works fees, which are development-related. They are not development impact fees, but because they're development-related, we've been recommended to use a 60-day timeframe. Some are not development-related, but just to be consistent amongst the department, we suggested using 60 days for all of them. I think we can answer some of the other questions that were given or walk through some of the fee studies, if that's what you'd like to do. One of the things I wanted to let you know about is we also had a very good, long discussion with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and they had some users there as well. So it was a very good public and commission discussion, in particular around field user groups and some of the programs there. But going to, for example, the first table, City Clerk, Councilmember Poppen asked about the life certificate. And this is typically required by pensioners from foreign countries. So they typically need to send proof back. Typically, it's been annually. My mother-in-law has to do this. So they send proof back that they're living so that they can continue to receive their pension from a foreign country. Where actually, I think the department has told me, we're receiving less of them than they have in the past. So it may be less common now, but it's, that's what a life certificate is. The staff, while we've calculated a cost to be $170, there's not that many of them, and we recommend that we just continue to provide that service to Millbrae residents without a fee. It's a staff recommendation. Again, most of the fees in the Clerk's department are established by state law. You asked about copying fees. So we can't charge, if it's a Public Records Act request, we can't charge for the time to make copies. We can only charge for the pages of copies. So that's the type of thing that we get into, and Clerk's department is probably the most impacted by it. So are there any questions on that section of fees on City Clerk?
I'm sorry, we're going to go from 170 to zero?
We're not charging a fee right now. So let me better explain the tables. So the tables reflect the current fee that we're charging. So you'll see, for example, new in the column that says current fee. The cost is a cost that was calculated through our study with Matrix Consulting. So they evaluated how much staff time do we spend performing this service? And that's what this cost is. So the cost and the fee are different. We can charge up to the cost of the service, or we can charge less than the cost of the service with your approval as counsel. So then the third column is the recommended fee. So that's what staff has recommended. And in this case of life certificate, we've recommended that while there's a cost of staff time to doing this, that we continue to provide it at no cost, at no fee.
So they work their whole life in another country, they come here, they're getting a pension from another country, they're using American services, and we're going to give them a life certificate for free?
I may quickly just provide a little bit of background on the life certificates. Those who typically receive them are pensioners who are elderly and are surviving on a pension, having been here for a number of years and having had time to speak to a number of those who come in and just kind of interact with them on a yearly basis. Number one, it's really nice to see them when they do come back. They are very old, most of them are. And some of them, you know, it's a challenge for them to come down to City Hall to even get the life certificate, not for all of them, but for some of them. So in our discussions in our department, the number of people who are coming forward to receive these services has diminished substantially, and I can say that we have less than 20 people, I believe, who come each year to get the life certificate. It takes very little time on the part of staff to do it. The most time it takes is for staff to pull out the city seal, walk down the hall, sit down, look at the person, say hi, and in five minutes to be done conducting the transaction. It just feels that it is a very big hardship to tell someone now that in order to get your pension, which in some cases is not very much, you're going to have to pay $170. So it's not something that we see increasing in our office. We don't have a huge increase. It's not continuously, you know, having, you know, 20 people a day.
I'm fine with that. That's okay.
Thank you.
These alarm monitoring fees, you're also going to zero?
So in our evaluation, let me get to that document.
So it might be helpful, just to chime in here, to go kind of department by department. That's the way the proposed fee schedule is laid out. So like we just did the City Clerk, then we can move on to Finance.
Are there any other questions on the City Clerk fee schedule, the proposed schedule? Okay. So Finance, to answer your question about alarm monitoring, we're still working on that fee as we looked at it. So this, there's an alarm permit fee, that's a permit to have, for example, an alarm and have kind of the records filed so we know who to contact in the event of an alarm. And then we had a service back when we had a police department where it connected directly to the police department versus going to your security system provider, and then they would call 911 for you. So in this analysis, again, that we can only charge what the service costs us, we've not identified a difference in providing that service. But we are going to continue to work with our law enforcement partners to identify if there is a true difference in cost for that service and bring it back at a later date.
Any questions on that section?
Any other questions on the finance fees? Okay.
Public Works?
Just to preface this, to answer a little bit of Councilmember Schneider's questions, we do, this is where some of the fees associated with water or utilities are. We're recommending a number of them stay where they are as we do some further analysis of utility rates and concerns around that. So for example, we've got a water turn-on and shut-off fee in the case of delinquency, and it's currently $53. And it was costed out at $137. We did not recommend a change to that fee. We recommend keeping it the same as we go through, again, some analysis of our utility fees and rates. We have recommended a new fee for when utility accounts are changed. So for example, when there's a move-in or move-out, the cost of setting up and sending a meter reader out. And that is similar to the fee that's been set up for the turn-off fees. Both the tenant leaving and the tenant coming in, or the resident leaving and the resident moving in. So it's kind of split between the two. Each one would have a fee. Another area that we looked at, so we talked about trees earlier. We recommended that the proposed fee for a street tree application is held until we address the tree ordinance. So they're working on some updates to the proposed tree ordinance, and we could look at an associated fee at that time. Oh, I'm sorry, that would be on the Public Works Department attachment two. So we're in attachment two to the staff report, walking through department by department. And also on the sewer CCTV inspection, so this is required when a property is transferred, we're recommending a new fee of $196, which is a staff time to review the video. However, we're recommending that if then the applicant has to replace their sewer lateral, that we reduce their permit fees by the amount they paid for this permit. So we just thought that that would reduce some of the hardship for that. Another fee that was a little bit different, we had a miscellaneous plan review fee, and we used to have a fixed fee. And now we've moved that to an hourly rate. So it looks like it was an over-collection. It's just a change in how we've chosen to charge it out, as it might vary depending on the type of activity.
Counselwoman Snyder.
I'm sorry, I'm finally finding the sewer fee. So tree roots, city tree, city tree roots get into a sewer pipe. They call, the resident has to pay a fee to have the city come and find out if it's the city's tree roots in the city's pipes causing a sewer backup? Can you explain that to me?
That's a different, I'm not familiar with that. But CCTV inspection is when, am I getting this right, Key? It's when a property is being transferred, they're required to do a TV inspection, and that is brought to our engineering department for review, and they determine if a replacement is required.
I think Counselwoman Schneider is saying that, at times, this happened to my house, too. The city roots would get into the city sewer. Before I had a cleanout, it would cause blockage and back up into my house. So that's the question, is when a tree root gets into a drain?
That depends on what sections of the sewer lateral. I think I stood in front of all of you many times talking about sewer laterals. There is a portion, the lower laterals, where you have a cleanout in the sidewalk. So the lower lateral belonged to the city. The upper lateral from the cleanout in the sidewalk back to the house belonged to you as the property owner. So it depends on what portion of the lateral that got blocked. If it is the upper lateral, then it is, as a property owner, it is your responsibility to hire a plumber to come and inspect and clear out the roots for you. Otherwise, you call us, we'll come out and inspect for you, and we will let you know whether it is a city responsibility to clear the roots or it is your responsibility. So we will advise you at the time of the call.
So would the homeowner be responsible for the video if it's found to be on their route, to be on the upper lateral?
That is accurate, yes. And also back to the CCTV inspection, there are a couple scenarios that a property owner is required to inspect the sewer lateral. Anytime that you have done an inspection of your sewer lateral, you're exempt from having to do any inspection for the subsequent 10 years. If you had replaced your sewer lateral, lower or upper, in the last 20 years, you are also exempt to having to do that if you sell your property. So one-on-one condition, when you sell your property, if you haven't done any of the two that I just mentioned, you are required to conduct an inspection, and we will review the DVD that's submitted to us and provide inspection to either the homeowner, the seller, or the buyer. Or under a second scenario, if you're adding more than 25% square footage to your house or what we call a substantial renovation, you are also required to inspect the sewer lateral.
So here's my problem, and this might be neighborhood-by-neighborhood specific. A lot of the older houses, so the ones like Highlands, Bayside Manor, our sewer cleanouts were in the private property, not in the sidewalk. So when we started having sewage back up, we had to spend $3,500 to move the inspection thing three feet into the sidewalk. Then the city would come out and run a camera, and then they said, yes, indeed, it is a city street tree, and then they fixed it, and then the sewage stopped backing up into our downstairs bathroom. I've heard that same thing from other residents that live in this area where the slope simply sends the poop coming up through the shower. So it kind of bugs me that we told residents that you've got to go spend thousands of dollars before the city will even put a camera in a pipe to find out that it's a city tree. We need to be planting more trees for climate change. We can't keep charging the residents for things that trees cause problems for because then they hate trees. They hate us, and they hate trees. So how can we make sure that what happened to my family back in 2004 isn't happening to others? Now, I can tell, walking the neighborhood, that many of us have moved that sewage cleanout valve into the sidewalk. You can tell, all the way over here, that it's been happening, probably because we all had poop coming up through the shower, and that's very unpleasant. So when I see this fee, it scares me a little bit. I just think these houses were here before we created this rule that the cleanout valve had to be in the sidewalk.
So if I may, I think everyone knows that it wasn't our rule, it was a court decision that actually implemented this. It was a Bay Keepers lawsuit, so we were forced to make that improvement by the courts. That was a consent decree that was just lifted a few months ago.
No, I don't think the consent decree required us to have to move the sewer cleanup vent three feet over.
Okay, that's.
But it was in the sidewalk. That was a city decision.
Is this a question about the fees?
Well, this is the fees. I mean, now I'd have to.
Well, the one consolation that I do hear from Key is that you, not necessarily moving three feet onto the sidewalk, but when you sell your house or do your repairs, you have the inspection and the fee, but we are going to take that off if they do the work, it comes off.
It's waived if they've done the work.
So we are doing, I mean, as much as I hate that we have that point of sale, it is, they're working with the fees to reimburse or credit, not reimburse.
It will be a credit, correct.
We waive $170 to get a life permit, but if my parents or any other older person has to come up with thousands of dollars before they can even get an inspection to move this vent into the sidewalk, why? The same vent was right there, it was three feet away. It was the same tree root. That's my point.
If I may answer that, Counselwoman Schneider, the reason why that we had modified the cleanout standards about 15, 20 years or so ago, a lot of the time when sewer called out came into, it happened after dark in the middle of the night, we cannot find those cleanout to clear the lateral. So 20 years ago or so, I believe the previous director superintendent, they collectively decided that they want property owner, if you have to do any sewer work, move the cleanout to the sidewalk. So they are easily identified, and we can find them. And also back to earlier question about street trees. So this is actually, you brought up a good point because standards have evolved over time, so has technology. And now we stopped using those short segments of clay pipe back in the 1940s and 1950s. A lot of the building materials were composed of vitrified clay pipe. They came in a six-foot section, and you got a lot of tree roots migrating into the pipe, especially during the drought because their roots are looking for water, so they somehow entered the pipe to the joint. And we had since, about 20 years ago, I think we were one of the very first cities And we had since, about 20 years ago, I think we were one of the very first city in San Mateo County to transition to a plastic pipe. And not only did we change the material, we specified a fusion pipe joint. That means we take two pieces of plastic, and we melted both ends, and we fused them together, so those pipe became seamless without any joint. So, the likelihood of tree roots going into the sewer pipe in the future would be very unlikely.
I think my end result, as I haven't had enough time to study this, but having had my family and other people in this neighborhood around City Hall get stuck in this, and many of them are seniors on fixed income too, I'd like to come back and address how that happens to those houses that haven't yet paid to move that clean-out into the sidewalk. And I'm happy to pass this tonight, if we can come back and look at that, and make sure that we are treating people on fixed incomes fairly.
Okay, good.
And just real quick also on the inspection, the reason why we're not recommending moving forward the building inspection fees tonight is that we're going to combine our inspection services. So, as of right now, anything on private property requires a building inspector, anything on public property requires a public works inspector. We're going to make that the same person. So, one inspector can go out and actually inspect on private property as well as public property. That will reduce our costs and add to efficiency. So, we are looking, we realize that it's expensive on some things, but we are looking at ways to better utilize our staff and be as efficient as possible to keep the cost as low as possible.
Let's keep moving.
I have to have a comment, sorry.
What, on this?
Yes, on this. My expectation is that the city records are maintained in a more efficient manner, because people are doing this, and then we send out contractors who don't check the city records. So, you know, I know, because you had to go out and check when one of our residents was told that they would have to pay additionally what they paid five years ago, and we did not keep good records.
Okay, thank you.
So, this needs to be a part of this equation. If you're going to send out independent contractors, the expectation is that they check the records with the city before telling our residents that they're going to have to pay more. Please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to recreation.
Actually, one last one. Parking permit.
Parking? I see parking permit right here, although it's blank all the way across. Given the changes down by the BART station, and the, is that the parking permits that we're talking?
So, right below that line you're looking at is the recommended fees, so the cost of a parking permit is calculated at $113 per permit. We're recommending to increase the commercial parking permit fee, but leave the residential at $26 as it is today.
Yeah, that's just, that's just the subject matter, parking permit. So, under parking permit, is commercial parking or residential parking?
Yes.
Well, residential parking is going to have to be exempted on the, near the BART station. I'm sorry, the developer paid for some parking fee thing. We cannot be charging those residents on that side for parking permits.
And it may not just be the Bayside Manor. We really, we've done this parking study recently that's part of the Act of Transportation Plan, which we haven't seen yet, but we know that there are commercial parkers parking on Willow, and La Cruz, and Poplar, and Chadbourne. We know that there are BART parkers on Chadbourne and Milbury Avenue, et cetera. We need to get our hands around that and not say, well, sorry, neighborhood, you now get to park, pay to park in front of your house. We just, we've got to get that resolved.
Correct. And I'd like to address, real quick, the Bayside Manor permit parking, the meaning that we had in condition of approval for TOD 2 is that they do contribute at least $10,000 to subsidize the parking permits. Those residents will not have to pay for parking permits.
Okay.
But I also note that we are collecting the fee. So, somebody is paying the fee, and that happens to be the developer.
City manager, what does that mean, though, for the people on Milbury Avenue, Chadbourne, Willow, Lewis?
So, that's something that we're going to have to address, and, you know, obviously, we'll make recommendations, but look to the city council to adopt a policy on that.
What's the FOG program?
That is the commercial grease trap at restaurants.
Oh, thank you.
Fats, oil, and grease.
Thank you.
Foggy subject, yes. Can we do recreation?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so recreation, we broke up into its many components. So, we can start with room rental. Again, as Courtney noted, for recreation programs, we are allowed to charge more than the cost. We can look at what the market will bear, and we've done that as it relates, in particular to facility rentals. We, again, had a robust discussion with the Parks and Recreation Commission and some users to build this, these recommendations that are included for you this evening. And one of the ways that it's been historically done is to use kind of cost as the measure for non-residents, and then 80% of that non-resident fee for a resident, or for a non-resident nonprofit, a non, that's not located in the city, and 50% of that fee for a nonprofit that is not located in the city is located in the city. So, starting with, starting with, with facility and room rentals, we've added some charges for, some charges for equipment, things, remotes, speakers, microphones, features that we've added over time, and we've added a cancellation fee. So, any questions on this section? Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Snyder. My only concern is the security deposit and how that's being maintained or enforced. I would hope that we have a very strict policy and someone signs on and signs off. I see it's like a $380 deposit, but is that being enforced?
Yes, that's being enforced. We have a pre-rental check-in and a rental checkout as well. So, the staff are reviewing that and going over the equipment and the carpet and all of the facility.
And you're confident with your staff's training on that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Along the same lines, the barbecue pits, because someone, just before I left, had found a barbecue with hot coals on it, and that's on the weekend. How can we possibly check and know that? So, somebody may have been a permitted barbecue user, or may not have been, and left hot coals in there.
Can we focus on just the fees?
Well, but that's the security fee, isn't it? Do we pay a security fee on the picnic areas?
No.
Okay.
So, should we? Because when those picnic tables get, when a big group is there and they've filled up, I know we've got the big bellies down there so that it can handle more trash, all that trash ends up blowing down the park and then blowing up and down Palm and Lansdale. So, then the residents are left picking up the garbage from the park use. I'm happy to see the park use, that's great, but should there be a security deposit that also says, "Clean up after yourself"?
We could certainly look at that and add that in. I actually think that's a good idea.
Especially, I mean, garbage is one thing, but live coals in September and October? That's really bad news.
Yeah, there are often times that I see on a Monday morning, or even on a Sunday morning, that the parks sometimes get pretty messy. So, I think that's a good idea.
So, I would also add that the picnic sites, and so it's, I'm moving to the next page on field use and rentals, the picnic sites, tennis courts, skate park, they're available to the public. These fees are only if somebody's choosing to reserve in advance. So, if you, you don't have to pay just to show up and use a tennis court, it's just that if somebody's happened to have reserved it in advance, then it's available to them as a priority. So, that, some of, in the, in the context of the fee studies, some of these things you may do to incentivize behavior, and it may disincentivize the reservation process. So, it's just something to look at, and we'll bring that back at another time.
Okay. Any other questions on this topic, on recreation? Moving on to, oh, more recreation.
So, that was on, yeah, there are quite a few recreations. So, the first one we looked at was facilities and room rentals. We just talked briefly about field use and rentals, so this is picnic sites. It's also the field users, so that's, that's where we partner, for example, with the AYSO or softball leagues, that type of thing. And again, they, we worked on this with them at the Parks and Recreation Commission. So, are there any questions on that? Just only on field use? So, the next is the special events and misliness and other programs, a number of new fees around special events, for example, application processing, a stage permit, setup and breakdown of the stage, street closures, and, and no parking signs, and also a cancellation fee and late registration fee. So, in many of these cases, we recommend a fee lower than cost, again, to promote the community activities. So, we'll take any questions on those fees.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have a question about the stage setup and breakdown. And actually, for the record, I asked the city manager about this earlier today regarding the Linnardir. 6512 to set up and break down the stage seems extremely high, and, you know, as I recall, part of the rationale for the purchase of that stage is that it could be set up, it basically sets itself up in about 15, 20 minutes through hydraulics. So, I'm a bit surprised as to that cost, and if the fee is only $2,500, then we're subsidizing $4,000?
So, from what I understand, the, that $6,500 does not include the setup and breakdown. That is specifically just over a 10-year lifetime use of the stage.
Appreciation. It says cost to provide service.
So, I think Courtney's looking it up right now, but I believe it was potentially looking at one time a month over 10 years for, so that would be the, the life, the use of the stage. So, that's why it's, it's written over here as $2,500 and $1,500 plus staff time for the setup. So, that is specifically strictly just the cost of the stage, the use of the stage.
So, that's an annual amortization on that, the 6512.
Well, the way, the way that it looks in, in this study, it looks like that's the cost to set it up for one event.
Yeah, each, per occasion, yeah.
I think that that was supposed to say stage plus setup and breakdown. That was a typo.
Well, regardless, then, what is the 2,500 fee for?
I think you would look at it as a rental fee, so the fee to rent the stage for.
Could be 2,500, okay. Yeah, I'd like a little bit more clarity as to what the 6512 represents, because, you know, just some back-of-the-envelope math, as I recall, it was like a 20-year useful life, and I think the cost was about $50,000. I know there's some maintenance, but it seems like, you know, even on a monthly or an annual basis, it should be much less than that, I would think.
So, 418? Okay.
They need, he's talking to Mike, please. McKenzie?
So, the 418 is the amortization for the stage, and the 6,500 is the setup and breakdown. Again, we've had the stage only a few months. I think we identified some efficiencies, and we can revisit this and perhaps bring it back with the planning and building.
Yeah, that'd be, clarification'd be useful.
So, if, so just for record, then, if a group were to rent the stage and have staff set it up and break it down, the total cost would be 2918. Is that correct?
Plus staff time, so.
Okay.
Yeah, based, based on what this is saying, but I think just in light of the recent developments and understanding what the actual costs are, I think it would make sense to bring it back, this specific line item.
All right, thank you.
So, it's 10-6, and we're not moving a very good clip, because we got 6100.
I think we have a couple left for this group. So, next is our youth and adult sports programs. Recommended some, some increases in, into each program. Again, working with our Parks and Recreation Commission and what would be manageable for our users. There's, there's a little bit of a lighter, a heavier subsidy, excuse me, recommended in the younger age groups, get them involved, get them engaged in after-school sports and programs. And again, these are pretty well-subsidized programs. These do vary quite a bit. The cost varies based on how many attendees you have, and so the more people register, it tends to be the less subsidy that is needed. Newer programs might have a bigger subsidy with fewer participants until they grow. So, these, again, are the youth and adult sports fees. Any questions there?
Sorry, I know we want to go home. I've heard from a number of residents, especially if they're a multiple-child residence, that our programs are so expensive that they take their kids and pay the out-of-city fees in San Bruno. How do we compare to San Bruno with this?
I believe that there was some comparison done by the Parks and Recreation Commission in developing this. Do you know that for sure?
Also, I think in the report.
Or, in that case, do we have a scholarship program and set guidelines for that?
Yes, I do know that the Parks and Recreation Commission Subcommittee did do comparisons with other local communities, and I also believe that Matrix did as well. But we do have a scholarship, so during all seasons except for basketball. So, during the fall and the spring season, we offer a 75% scholarship for those students who participate in free and reduced-price lunch, free and reduced-price meals. We actually coordinate with the school district on that. So, we just send their names over to the school district, and they let us know if they qualify, and then we offer that scholarship. And then during basketball season, it's 50% scholarship.
Excellent, thank you. And the public would know, then?
All of our registrations say that there are scholarships available.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions on those programs? We just have one left. So, the last is our city-provided programs, summer camps, and early childhood education This one after, sorry about that, after a discussion with Parks and Recreation Commission, staff revisited, they did recommend a bit of a higher increase in costs from what had been recommended, and that's what ended up in our recommended fee study as Exhibit A.
Childhood, I want to make sure that we're not undercutting other daycare services, that, but they should be, if they can be subsidized for hardship, then that's appropriate. But I just want to make sure, you know, we're at market rate.
And I think our program has some pretty limited hours, and so it's not typically used, to my understanding, as a daycare.
Okay. All right. So, I have one speaker slip. Nathan?
I will try to keep this brief, so I don't stand between you and ending this meeting in an expedient manner, but I did, do wanted to bring up at least two things that I saw in the fee schedule that I thought deserved some attention. First of all, I know Mayor Lee has spoken a lot about expanding the tax base of the city. He even mentioned it in this very meeting once already. So, the fact that the business fee has doubled and is high relative to neighboring cities seems to work against the idea of building up a stable, sustainable, commercial base for Milbury. I mean, most likely, the fee is nominal relative to the cost of actually do, running a business in Milbury, but still, the signal that that sends seems pretty discouraging. The second thing is I wanted to talk a little bit about the parking fee. I think the city council should consider raising the residential parking fee to the cost of providing that service. When I lived in San Francisco, I had to pay an annual parking permit of about $100, and I considered that a steal. I mean, that's just for a year of being able to park on the street, wherever I could find it, near my apartment building. That seemed pretty great. Additionally, I think the only way that we're going to solve the parking challenges that are occurring in the BART area and in the airport proximity area is through something like a more comprehensive. like a more comprehensive residential parking program. So people who live in the area pay some fee to get a permit. The rest of the time, there's some hourly limit on, or three-day limit on how long you park, and then you, the cars get towed otherwise. That's a very easy way to ensure that the residents who want to be able to park in their neighborhood have access to street parking and limit the use by people who are using it for BART or the airport or whatever. So I did see in the staff notes that this might be revisited, but I just think that this is something that the council should be willing to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Nathan. So do I have a motion? Did any of the speakers? Could I have a-
Do you have to close the public hearing?
That's what I'm getting to. Does that, a motion to close public hearing?
Someone?
I have a question.
Yes?
Quick question.
Yeah, we can close public hearing first and ask your question.
You guys talk way more than I do. So if we were to take the old, the recommend, or what we could do, and we took the recommendations, what is that, what would that tally up to be?
So we've conservatively estimated about $100,000 per year for this set of fees. The building and planning fees will be another set of fees. We believe that's a pretty conservative estimate because we've, you know, not increased some fees that have been recommended for increase, but we think minimally it'll be that amount. And then, again, as we bring in the additional building and planning, we'll expect some additional revenue there as well.
So what could it have been if we took the middle, the middle tabular total?
Well, if you went all the way with even recreation, that's the $2.6 million.
So that's the total $2.6-
Use the mic, please.
Oh, sorry. Yes.
And we're going to $100,000?
And Councilwoman Snyder, Aliva, you need to speak closer to your mic. They can't hear you. Okay.
Total.
Yeah, so going to the report that was included, or actually, even the presentation that we started with this evening. The, if I can backtrack this slide. So this is, this slide reflects the potential revenue if you took every one of those fees. Again, it's all based on how many applicants or how many people are participating. You may reduce participation in some things like recreation by making the fees 100%, but this would be everything at 100% of cost.
And we're going to, but we're taking the total that we've, we're going to accept tonight to be a total of $100,000?
Yes, as a conservative estimate. The recreation fees were nominally increased, which is the significant portion of it. Parks fees did not have much increase at all, so it's really in finance and public works. And some of those, we recommended no change.
And then there were some new fees. Okay, can I have a vote to-
I do want to just add a little bit of clarity on the reso. We've also asked for authorization for the city manager to extend the effective date where it's appropriate. For example, in working with our partners in recreation programs, if they need some time to adjust their user rates.
Okay, let's vote to close the public hearing, and then let's have that discussion. Oops, I don't know why I did that. Hang on. Oh, God, this system's so old. All right.
The motion to close the public hearing passed unanimously.
Okay, any other discussion? So we're going to come back with some changes to the public works fee, right?
So that was recommended as part of the adoption, was that the street trees would not be addressed at this time. That would come forward with an ordinance. In terms of this evening's actions, the only one that I heard you wanted to hear back on was the stage, because you wanted some better clarification of cost.
Yeah, and then, so if the director can work with Councilwoman Snyder concerning tree intrusions and social fees, parking fees. I believe parking's going to be addressed in a future date in terms of a parking district, so. Did you have something, Vice Mayor?
I was also going to mention the stage rental.
Yeah, we always, we always talk, mention that. Okay.
Sorry, can I just, and I don't know if this needs to be done through the reso or not, but can it be amended to say that it will be reviewed annually as part of the budget process with a CPI index?
If that's reasonable.
So it doesn't get lost in the weeds anywhere.
Sure.
Yeah. That's a good idea.
The consultant?
Yeah, yeah, something to the line, something like, you know, whereas in the budget process each year, the city staff shall adjust the fees based on a CPI index, or something to that effect.
Our consultant is smirking. Is that allowed?
Yeah, I was going to tie it to MOU, not CPI.
Well, yeah, I don't know why, but I, so there's a couple of things. One is CPI, as long as we maintain, we don't exceed our 100% cost recovery. We obviously have a long way to go.
Well, here's, well, as I see it, you know, if it comes back in five years or something for the next study, it's pretty predictable that we're going to be well, you know, underwater and all.
I mean, I guess I would add CPI and MOU, but if we're not 100% cost recovery, and then, you know what I mean? If we do CPI, we incrementally will close the gap.
If I may, we are bringing this-
MOU, MOU is just going to get us wider and wider, for example.
We are bringing this-
See what I mean? Till we get to 100% cost recovery, or until we reach the goal established by the council of cost recovery, whether it's 50%, 75%, or whatever. But at least this, instead of having sticker shock, because we haven't done this for a while, we incrementally at least use inflation as an index. At least that keeps us somewhat-
Yeah, because like some years, there's no change to the MOU in terms of salaries overall, like this past year.
And we're so far out of whack right now that this will help.
Okay, okay.
It's minor.
Okay, so do I have a motion?
Can I get some specific wording on that? I'm not quite sure what we're, what we're doing here. So are we going to just look at this every year, or are we going to change it?
I would recommend that we look at it, but administratively, we bring back a budget with a CPI adjustment, and if we need to adjust it based on an MOU or some other issue at that point.
So nothing automatic, we're just going to- Right, nothing automatic. The staff directed each year with the budget to bring back potential revisions to the-
Correct, it would still require city council approval. Yeah, no administrative increase in the fee schedule.
Okay, is that understood? That's the motion? Okay. Somebody motion second? Thank you, your vote.
Item number 11 passed unanimously.
Okay, so we have 40 minutes to get through this. I would recommend we just go through the action items and forego the information items until later, if we can get to it. All right, so the next item is number 12. Resolution awarding professional service agreement to Swinton Management and Consulting for Project Construction Management Services for the Millbrae Recreation Center Restoration Project.
We're going to make a change to the reso.
Good evening, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council, Keeling Public Works Director. I'm in front of you tonight to talk about one very interesting project. We have the recreation center building. And I'd also like to introduce Jane Cow. Jane is our senior civil engineer. She came to us over two and a half years ago, and she is a person that you want to thank for the Baykeeper Consent decree. She spent the last year and a half focusing on replacing six to eight miles of sewer pipeline to get us out of the Baykeeper Consent decree, and now she has this very exciting job for the next two and a half years. And also, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff G., the Vice President of Swinton, who is also in the audience. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation to Jane, and she is going to walk you to the RFP process. Just as some background information, we were here in front of you a couple times. We have changed, we have changed the delivery methods on this project from design built to design built. So first thing first, we need to get our construction managers on board to help us deliver this project under the design-built guideline. So with that, I'm going to turn that over to Jane.
Thank you, Ki. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. So I'm here with a very exciting update for the Millbrae Recreation Center project. So quick background, so last time we came before council for this project was September 24th, and that day, we, the council approved the use of the design-built project delivery method, and also authorized the issuance of the request for proposal for construction and project management services to support the project. So on October 9th, staff issued an RFP on the city's website. November 1st, we received six proposal in response to the RFP, and the firms submitted are from CPM Associates, CSG Consultants, Cummings Management Group, Griffin Structure, MAC5, and Swinton Management and Consulting. So the selections committee reviewed and scored the proposal based on the following criteria. So the first one, we have the acceptance of the city's standard terms and conditions. Number three, two and three are qualifications and experience of the firm. Here, we looked at the proposed work plan and approached, and also, sorry, and also having completed similar project. Number four and five are for qualifications of the project managers and the other personnel that was proposed on the project team. Lastly, their understanding of the project scope, proposal and project approach, value-added services, and anticipated resource needs of the city. This also included the ability to provide quality control and management, and also the ability to maintain the city's schedule and budget. So the city selection committee shortlisted three firms based on their proposal, and they are Griffin Structure, MAC5, and Swinton. Phone interviews were conducted with MAC5 and Swinton on November 7th. Griffin Structures was non-responsive. Based on the proposal and the interview, the selection committee unanimously, unanimously selected Swinton as the highest-ranked proposer based on the criteria set forth in the RFP. So the exciting part, next step. So tonight, we are in front of you. Staff is recommending that the city council adopt a resolution awarding a professional services agreement to Swinton for project and construction management services for the Millbrae Recreation Center in the amount of $1,172,773, and authorizing the city manager or destiny to execute the subject agreement and any amendments or addenda for up to the project contingency amount of $200,000. With the PM/CM team on board, the project team will begin preparing the design-built request for qualification to pre-qualify design-built teams. And concurrently, we will begin working on the criteria documents and the design-built RFP. We are currently on schedule as presented at the September council meeting. So that concludes my update. Any questions? Yes.
Yeah, they come highly recommended and a good track record, so thank you for all those who interviewed. I think our interest in, in a labor agreement, project labor agreement?
That is correct, Councilwoman Tappan. We are currently going to be working with the city attorney office on the project PRA.
Okay, and I greatly appreciate the speed at which we are taking this on. This is not without great consideration for those viewing on the public side. This is with the goal of achieving a recreation center within budget, and is, that must be as quickly as possible because of accelerated costs at this point. So a lot of thought has gone into this as we progress, but in order to afford this in a reasonable manner, this is where we have the best alternative of doing. So thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Just, first of all, one point of clarification. I believe the contingency is 120,000, not 200,000?
I think you're correct, you caught us.
Well, I think, if I may, so this bid came in at $228,000 under the previous Group Four estimate, and so, correct me if I'm wrong, Ki, I think, I think that they-
Group Four was about 1.4 million.
I think they finessed it a little bit to say 200,000, to say this is the adopted budget from the previous work, so up to 200. We hope it comes in, you know, with-
20,000, so it's-
It's the resolution.
That's what the council saw.
No, no, my preference is to keep, my preference is to keep it 10%. We can manage it better than 200,000, so I'd rather keep the 10%. But I, I think that that was the discrepancy.
Okay.
You give engineers an open checkbook, that's what happens. I like the 10%.
It is 10%, will be 120,000. It is a typo, my apology.
Thank you. And this amount, the 1.17 plus 120, that's all included in the total 30 million-ish dollar budget.
Yes.
It's not an addition, it's not a new cost.
All of this is within the previous cost estimate that was presented by Group Four estimates, so yes.
We've seen 30 to 34. The objective is 30.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Need a second?
We do need a motion.
Can you take a vote?
Item number 12 passed unanimously.
Thank you. Okay, so I suggest we knock out 16 and 17 pretty quickly. That should be pretty quick, and then we can go on to 15. Is that okay? So let's do number, let's do number 16. Stop the resolution mending employment agreement with city manager Tom Williams.
We're faster than you. It should be yours now, right?
Yeah, is there a presentation?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you is the report on the amendment to the city manager's agreement. So as you all know, on October 22nd, you held a closed session meeting as a review for the city manager, and this is the outcome this evening for this item. The city council appointed, appointed Mr. Williams to fill the permanent position of city manager back in November of 2018, and at that time, entered an employment agreement. The city manager William has been providing excellent service to the city in many areas, and not to mention-
That's opinion of staff.
Well, you know, I'm just, I'm just reading what's on the report here, but it's, he's done an excellent job. And so under the contract that he has, there is an annual performance review. So at this time, the amendment is to just amend Section 2, which is the term of the agreement, to a three-year term, which would be effective beginning December 3rd of 2019, and all other terms in the agreement remain the same. So this concludes my report.
Questions, comments, Councilwoman Snyder?
I would only say that I've heard nothing but positive feedback on the city manager's performance. They appreciate seeing the city manager at public events and around town, and for all of the new activities. And sometimes, there's even good news on Nextdoor.
Whoa. Anybody else? Okay, so I just want to also thank our city man, Tom Williams. He's been very responsive, been out there in a public, which is something we really wanted. He received high marks on his, on his survey by the council, and thank you for not, he's not asking for a raise or increase at this time. So we appreciate your consideration for our current budget and your service to the city. Do I have a first and second, or your votes, please?
Item 16 passed unanimously.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, and I'll just say it's been a pleasure working with the council and the community, so we still have a lot of work to do, but looking forward to it. And I'll also take the opportunity to thank the executive management- And I'll also take the opportunity to thank the executive management staff and the city attorney. We're coming together quite well as a team and working cooperatively. So thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, item 17, consider formation of a city council infrastructure subcommittee to address infrastructure and all the public works-related interests and disband the sewer modernization subcommittee.
Good evening, mayor, member of the city council. I did not prepare a presentation for this very short item. So I just want to remind you, back in 2014 and 2015, we had a infrastructure task force. So I remember a couple of you were actually sitting on the infrastructure task force. Vice Mayor Ruben Holliver, Councilwoman Gina Pappan, I'm not sure about...
How was there?
You were also on the task force. So, it started in 2014, we met throughout the year, and we continued the task force into 2015. We identified some critical infrastructure that we needed to pay attention to. So some of the good news is, like I mentioned earlier, we got out of the consent decree. The asphalt pavement, the pavement condition index has increased by five point from 53 to 58 over the last 12 months. So we have done some good things for the city. So we thought that since the baykeeper consent decree has since expired, why don't we dissolve the sewer modernization subcommittee? And in its place, we form a new infrastructure slash public works subcommittee, if you will. And have the mayor seems to want to appoint Vice Mayor and Councilwoman and Schneider as on the infrastructure subcommittee. So I am going to have the pleasure of working with both of you in the next year, two years, or maybe indefinitely on this subcommittee, and we can formulate some topics of interest, topics of discussion. I know some of the topics that we'll be talking about would be sea level rise, climate action plan, greenhouse gases, and importing trees program ordinance. So with that, any question for staff?
You just took the thunder out of me, so that's fine. That's okay. So, do I have a, so upon approval of this subcommittee, I'm going to appoint Vice Mayor and Holliver and Councilwoman Schneider, so, to this committee. Have you got agree? Okay, thank you. So I need a motion and second, need a second. You vote.
Thank you, and thank you.
Item 17 passed unanimously.
Okay, let's move on to the budget. That's what we were all waiting for.
Five minutes? Sorry?
We've got 25 minutes to finish this. No, less than that, because we've got a closed session.
This one?
Let's just hit the highlights.
Okay, so I'm going to do my usual lightning-speed budget presentation. So, just a quick overview, we'll talk about how we ended last year. We're not quite done with the audit, we're almost there, so we feel pretty good about the numbers. We'll talk about some adjustments we've identified for this year, some other adjustments in terms of creating some efficiency in our process and authorizing some contracts exceeding $50,000. So again, as of preliminary numbers for the end of last year, we look like our revenues are exceeding projections by about 1.5 million. A significant portion of this is in community development revenue, especially related to one-time revenue for TOD projects, which has an associated expense, but it is still a very positive revenue picture for the city. All departments closed within budget projections or budget authorizations, except for that community development change related to the one-time project. We are recommending for this current fiscal year, 2019 to 2020, making some updates to our revenue projections. We have gotten new updates of property tax figures from the county, so we're recommending increasing that projection, $250,000, increase in our sales tax projection. So even though we've lost a significant retailer, we're still seeing some, a clip in sales tax. And our interest, it's been a very positive investment market of late, so we're seeing some increases in interest, and we would like to budget those in the forecast. Those will be used to offset some increases in appropriations that are needed. So, as we've really filled vacancies and really completed a lot of projects, we've identified the need to, some things where maybe we've given salary savings in the past, we've decided, we've needed to budget them now more specifically. And some changes in services and supplies, as we've cleaned up our accounting and general ledger with the new system. And we've had some expenses, for example, from the fire that, we've completed that period of loss, so there's some expenses that need to move into the general fund for, such as restrooms and fences associated with that area. So, we're recommending that those expenses are authorized, increases to those expenses are authorized. We've also made some recommended adjustments in other funds. So, similar reasoning in highway user tax, we've had some, some expenses we normally would use salary savings for, but again, keeping our vacant positions filled, filling them very quickly has kept that salary savings off the table. In integrated waste management, this was an error on my part in adopting the last budget. We left off a part-time employee, so we're bringing that back into the budget. And also, an increase in services and supplies reflecting the addition of the cost allocation plan that we talked about. In the enterprise funds, again, similar changes in salaries and benefits, services and supplies are a variety of reasons. For example, in sanitation, there, again, another error in terms of leaving off our sewer grant program. And so that's been added back and some changes in the cost allocation plan. In the stormwater fund, we have grant revenue coming in for the Taylor Middle School Green Infrastructure Program. So, project was, started last year and ongoing this year, and so that grant revenue will come in this year, so we've included that revenue for this year. Otherwise, the fund is mostly general fund subsidized. I'll take a moment, that's kind of the operating picture. We'll get into capital projects, but since I'm going so quickly, I thought I'd take any questions so far.
No, no questions.
Okay.
Capital vehicle, can we just look at getting an electric vehicle? At least getting, we can at least get a grant from PCE.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure the types of vehicles, maybe Key can answer that. I do want to take just a moment on capital funds. I just want to be sure, something that's of concern that we want to be sure is understood. We've done a significant, significant capital investment because we had a lot of surplus funds over our necessary required reserve. So we'll probably end up slowing down the capital investment from the general fund because there simply won't be the finances to do it unless we have new revenue sources. And of course, we're very actively looking at that, but it'll be a much smaller contribution from the general fund. So in terms of this year, we've changed funding sources for streets projects, so we could reallocate funds to other places. We did have plenty of both fund balance and new money coming in in Measure A, the new Measure W, and that's a conservative estimate, and highway user tax.
Okay, do we also have the, what is our assumed discount rate for pensions?
So, right now, we're still using the rate that CalPERS is using, which is about 7%. We can do a modification of that rate, but again, you need funding to do that. So at this point, we're making the payments as, as CalPERS provides them, which is based on that, that assumed discount rate.
Can we, can we, as a council, agree to have a study to look at doing a lower, assuming a lower discount rate?
We can do that study as staff. We can bring that back at a later date.
Can we, is council, oh, is council interested in that? Yeah, and being, it has saved the council a lot of, I mean, saved the city a lot of money in the long run. Okay. So, let's make that a priority, because we, you know, we don't want to get our pants caught short in this, in the pensions.
Yeah, I think it's more of a cost-benefit question, so we'll bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
Then on, in terms of ongoing on capital projects, oops, sorry. So, some of the projects that got funded, so as we did last year's budget, we did not fund parks improvements into this year, we left that unfunded as well as landscape improvements, so we funded some of that. We had a much greater funding level in 1819. This year, it's significantly lower. We do have some grant funds to continue the work on the spur trail. Again, that's been started. And we also are recommending deferring some upgrades at Fire Station 37 at the facility There's, we'll talk about the specifics to these programs as we get to those funds, but there's a need for additional transfer out to both stormwater and to the garage. So, in the enterprise funds, we're recommending some adjustments for, mostly related to rescheduling of programs or projects. So the sewer rate study, we'll want to start to look at that this year. And in terms of the sewer modernization program, we've transferred lift station improvements into that program, looking at adding some additional sewer main replacements and some, we've reduced to defer, as we're still in design for the Medron Pump Station, forced main and station improvements. At the treatment plant, also deferring the co-gen system replacement, we're accelerating some projects that were in 2019, 20, I'm sorry, 2020, 2021, and bringing those forward to get them going sooner, and suggesting some new projects, digester improvements, typical rights system improvements, and providing some funding for capital and improvements that kind of been unknown, kind of been as those repairs come off annually, annually. Needing additional funds for water efficiency, water capability, after having a sufficient position, there is a water lining to do a water main replacement on Broadway and still have the required reserve funds, all that to meet council policy. So in stormwater, we're looking at rolling forward funding for the Tohone Canal Pump Station rehab, and that project is being managed by Burlingame, it's running a little bit slower than budgeted, so we're just committing those funds and holding them in the fund to be sure they're not used elsewhere. Needing some additional funding for Millbury Avenue Storm Culver and unfunding the tidegate dredging and repair project that was funded in this year. We'll look at it in future years. For the garage, in terms of, I don't know what if any of these vehicles can be electric vehicles, but we're adding vehicles that were budgeted last year, but we deferred the purchase, has a little bit of small cost savings. We've accelerated a couple of purchases just due to equipment needs and, example, like recall issues. Deferring a purchase of a hydro vac, it's a pretty significant cost, so that does present a savings. We do an annual, we call it a rental rate to build a fund, to use this garage fund. Two of the pieces of equipment, the backhoe and the Ford F-450, do require some funds from the general fund, as the funds that were transferred annually do not meet the actual expected cost of the vehicle. So that's about $65,000. Any questions on capital?
At the League of California Cities, I attended a presentation by the City of Oakland and a biodiesel company that I think might be affiliated with Exxon. They've converted a lot of the Oakland fleet over to this. If we can't go EV with this heavy equipment, do we have plans, or is this something that'll come out of the Climate Action Plan for converting to biodiesel? Apparently, you don't have to do any engine converting. It can take the new fuel without having to do any conversion to the, to the motor.
I just got the nod, staff is looking at that.
Okay, very good.
Any other questions on capital?
If I just preface that, so it's also in conjunction with South City Scavenger and the programs that they're doing, and where we would, where we would actually buy that fuel. So we're a little bit different than, than Oakland in some respect, but, so it'd be working in partnership with our solid waste.
It's a different fuel, but I haven't had a chance to give you my notes yet from that conference.
Yep. Councilwoman Pappan?
The staggering water prices that we are all receiving as residents here, if we can somewhere, we're going to have to inform the public, is there an end game? When are we going to be caught up on these water projects, so they know what they're paying for? And they're, you know, we get, San Francisco keeps raising their rates, and Millbury has to keep our water system alive somehow, but we have to educate our public and ourselves in knowing what we are paying for and these staggering rates that are yet to come. So, I don't know how that plays into this, but we need help.
We do have in our action plan as staff to develop kind of a review of the rates where they are. They were adopted in 2017 towards the end of the year, but a review to see where we are and to see, you know, what if any adjustments can be made. It may come together as part of the upcoming sewer rate study. So, a rate study doesn't always have to mean increases, we can reevaluate what we've, where we're at and see, you know, what can be accelerated, decelerated, and make adjustments. So we'll be looking at it as part of that or sooner.
And staff is going to make a informational, a few informational meetings to educate the community about why the fees are what they are, and we need to, and the fact that we still need to graze them incrementally, other than, rather than having a big sticker shock like we did last time. And I also like to mention that, I also, I need to ask, how much of our general fund is subsidizing the enterprise fund?
So, at this point, we've learned this through the cost allocation plan, so the subsidy is really in terms of providing administrative services. So as we did the cost allocation plan, we evaluated, for example, when you look at HR payroll, you look at how many employees each department or division has. And so, the total subsidy is remaining at about 1.3 million dollars.
Okay, so that's money that, this is the enterprise fund, there's two funds, this is general fund for the public to understand, this general fund comes from property taxes. And then there's the enterprise fund, which comes from rate payers who are using sewer and water. So what we're doing is we're taking some of the property tax money that we collect and subsidizing some of the, some of the enterprise fund water sewer to keep the rates lower. So it's kind of artificial, yes.
So, so the 1.3 million, is that for water or sewer or both?
It's a mix. What we did this year, it was similar to the fee study, we hadn't really studied that overhead charge we were charging to those funds. We were charging a charge, but it wasn't identified. So we did the cost allocation plan with Matrix Consulting and identified, and so what we did for this budget year, for 1920, we went to half of what that cost allocation plan amount was from the study. And so we'll look through this next budget process, and we need to look at what it may impact on rates or services in those enterprise funds and make some recommendations about bringing it.
Okay, so the goal would be to bring it down to 650 or so?
The goal would be to re, well, we would make a recommendation in general to reduce that subsidy.
Okay.
But again, we need to look at what does that mean for rates and for capital programs and for other needs.
And as you said, this is like a, it's a cost allocation plan, it's not, you know, I remember before we had increased the water rates, I believe there was a direct subsidy from the general fund to the water fund for actual, I don't know if you remember this, but for actual, you know, water purchases and service.
Yeah, what was...
And that's not what we're doing now.
Yeah. What was happening was not really as much a subsidy, but kind of what they would, most kind, the water fund was out of cash.
Right.
So it did, so basically, yeah, there was...
Which isn't the case now.
Kind of thinking, like, you could think of it like an inter-fund loan, but it wasn't that formal. It didn't get as dire as, because we acted quickly enough to get, you know, new water rates in place. And the first increase was significant, it was in the 30 to 40% range. But it really restored the fund to a good position, and we've built a 10% reserve that's in the adopted council policy and have funds to do capital programs.
And I believe there will be at least two, two more years of increases, I think that go through 2021 or 2022, is I think, five-year, yeah, okay.
Okay, so let's, you know, can I have a motion and a second to...
In terms of, so the additional budget authorizations, I know we're getting late. We are requesting authority that, to increase revenue appropriations for grants and donations without coming back each time to council, similar also for pass-through costs. So we had that in our resolution associated to deposit accounts, but we wanted to associate it to other fees, so that we don't have things like community development being really tight on budget because they got a big revenue increase. Also, this is similar to all of our annual resolutions, authorizing transfers within the same department, within the same fund, and up to $25,000 from the general fund to other funds. And then finally, authorizing some contracts exceeding $50,000. These tend to be our kind of annual services that we've needed, and so rather than bring each one to one by one, we've brought them as part of this process. ADP is a new contract, we've needed to, we've identified that we need to have a timekeeping system. Our current system, part of it's paper and part of it's online, but it only reports, for example, that an employee worked eight hours, it doesn't say which eight hours. So we've needed to upgrade that system to say, I worked from 8 to 12, I took a lunch for half an hour, I worked from 12:30 to 4:30. And the others are ongoing contracts. Mid-Pennsylvania Boys and Girls Club, we renegotiated to a lower annual cap with them, from $200,000 to $100,000. And so, now, if you'd like to take action, again, we're recommending you adopt the resolution amending the 1920 budget, authorizing the related budget actions, amending the capital plan just for 1920, authorizing the purchases and vehicle, purchases of vehicles and equipment, and authorizing city manager execute agreements exceeding $50,000.
Thank you. Okay, quick question, please.
With the formation of this new infrastructure committee, if, for example, they... we could discuss a budget change at that time? Otherwise, I'd ask for money for trees right now.
Yeah, provided there's funding, we can bring budget adjustments anytime during the year, along with, for example, a contract, or, the tricky part is, the funding, especially for capital, is just going to get leaner and leaner.
And then with the Boys and Girls Club budget, they were listed from the census discussion earlier at the special council meeting, can we get them to help us with census outreach to their community?
Okay, that's a subject, topic.
But it's just, it's up there.
Okay. All right, so can I have a first, second, and your votes, please?
Item 15 passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you. It's 7:20, and we still have a closed session, so I'm going to recommend that we move the item 13 and item 18 to the next meeting, or a subsequent meeting. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I'm going to skip council comments, except to say-
Close in memory of, please?
I will close in memory.
We have a city meeting coming up.
What?
Ground-based noise meeting, four days.
For anybody who, if people have been following Nextdoor, all around the town, people are hearing more noise, seems to be the last couple of months. The next ground-based noise meeting will be at the Park and Recs Building on Monday. I think it's at 10:00, but I haven't gotten a confirmed date on that. So if you're feeling that there's more noise in your neighborhood, please come or please reach out to me. Thank you.
Okay, and one other announcement, and then we'll close in memory of Tom Colina. There's a candlelight procession and memorial program, and Day Remembrance for Transgenders who lost their lives in hate crimes and bullying. So I'm hoping that people will attend. It's on Wednesday, November 20th, from 5:00 to 8:00. And the fidget will be at the Redwood City Courthouse Square, and the program will be at 6:30 at the library in the downtown community room. We'll post that. And also, we're going to close in memory of Lion Tom, Tom Colina, a longtime volunteer. I have to say, he volunteered to the very last minute, so he's going to be very missed. He's always been a staple in the Lions Club and the community, and our condolences to Judy and family.
Happy birthday, former Mayor Quig.
Oh, that's great, a birthday celebration.
And good luck in your search.
Everybody, happy Thanksgiving. We have no more meetings this month. This is my last meeting as a mayor, before I turn over, so I'd like to thank the council for a great year. I think we accomplished a lot, and I'll speak more about it next meeting. So let's close the meeting, the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.